Good morning, I'll call the meeting to order. Could we have the roll call please?
Mr. Chairman.
Present.
Here.
President?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Welcome everybody to our March 17th meeting. Thank you all for coming. Pastor Phillips from Red River is here to share a prayer with us. Thank you Pastor.
Precious Lord God above all things, before all things, beyond all things, we just ask your blessings on what we say and do here today. Lord, we thank you for the gift of this day. We thank you for the beauty of this place. Lord, may we never take your blessings for granted. Lord, we ask that you grant this council wisdom, that you grant them courage, that you give them the resources necessary to carry out your work here in this place at this time. Lord, we ask your watch care over our firemen, over our police officers, over all of our emergency service personnel. Again, Lord, give them a safe and a blessed day. And Lord, I ask that for each one that's here today. Lord, as we speak these words, may we know the truth, that there's a God in heaven, that we were created by him, and that our lives should be for his glory in all things, that precious heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If we could remain standing, we'll do the pledge. Edward, could you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gallegos.
I'd like to ask the audience to join in celebrating Edward V. Behill's birthday on Thursday, and if we could sing him a happy birthday. I was thinking of missing this meeting, but I thought Ed's gonna be there, so I gotta do it. I gotta do it.
We're glad you showed up.
On three, is that good?
On three, in the key of G.
On the key of G. Anybody watching up on the monitors, if you guys can sing in your offices, just so everybody can hear, the whole county can hear.
Yes.
One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you.
Edward.
Happy birthday to you.
Edward.
Happy birthday, dear Edward. Happy birthday to you.
My name is not Patty.
All right, on to less important matters. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second with some corrections, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
Go ahead Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the minutes. I second that.
Let's see, discussion, I did notice that one thing I thought might be worth switching around. Under 14, the Commissioner's report, A is a discussion of a letter concerning the closure of Pinasco, which states that we're going to consider a lease, and then B is a consideration of the lease, might be better if we flip those around.
I apologize. I did see that as well, Mr. Chairman, so I amend my motion that we approve the agenda with flip-flopping A and B under item 14.
And do we have a second to Commissioner Fambro's motion?
Second.
Further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item number five, citizens' concerns, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address us? Good morning.
Good morning, how are you today?
Good morning Martin.
Martin Chavez, and we're here to, and this is Betty Adamson.
We're basically here just to, we are working on the Santa Stevan Road.
It was adopted last April 1st, April Fool's Day, and it's interesting that we're here before you on St. Patrick's Day, but we'll take that as a good omen. And what was addressed at that, just to recapture that, at that meeting was Rick Chavez proposed to the commissioners that they adopt the Santa Stevan Road, because one mile long, pretty straight road, the homeowners had committed to providing the coverts, and that still stands. And there was a bit of a concern about the kids and the school bus on Highway 64, a little safety concern there, fast traffic. And then the other homeowners expressed their concern about access of emergency vehicles and providing the public safety that we need there. So Dan Barone made a motion to adopt the road based on the availability of funds to do the survey, and we looked at the last quarter, that was April, and then the last quarter of the fiscal year, those funds weren't available, and we kind of understand that at the end of the year, you know, that happens. But we've been through the first, second, and third quarter, and no survey, so we're here to see if there's maybe some resolution to that, just to kind of inquire as to what's going on, and maybe just express our continued interest in that, and even explore some options if that's the case. And so that's why we're here.
Well, we appreciate you coming back and reminding us of that. I do remember the meeting well, and that this commission had made the decision to adopt that road with a public-private partnership with residents agreeing to purchase the coverts, which was a big commitment on their part. So I will ask Commissioner Fambro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Myself and Earl and Adelmo Medina have met with Mr. Chavez, and we've been out there now three times. His concern of that school bus, we actually witnessed that, that's at the other end of it, and that's kind of a different issue, but it's a very important one. But I applaud Mr. Chavez for what he does on his own on that road. It's unbelievable that, all the time and material and stuff that he's done to keep it up, pretty much, we could almost call him the Myrdomo of that road, I think, because...
Well, we've had some help, you know, Mr. Rodriguez.
There's three of them that get their personal stuff together, and they do a lot on that, and we've had great meetings with him, and he's been very proactive on this, and I think it's time that we belly up to the bar and bar part.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just checked with our finance director, under the Commissioner's budget for services, we do have actually some money available for that, so I can go ahead and move forward with the survey.
Great, so I guess that would be the next step, would be to move forward with the survey then? Would there be a formal adoption, Bob, beyond what we had, the action we'd taken last year?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. According to the statute, we have to, and I don't remember the exact timeline, but we have to obtain the survey, file it with the clerk, and then a certain number of days after that, the commission can act to adopt the road.
Commissioner Fambro.
Mr. Chairman, there's also a couple of areas that we identified in our time there that we may need the services of an engineer to help us kind of make sure that we're doing it right. There's a couple of low spots that may need to be raised considerably, and we want to make sure that it's right for the drainage in that area, so that it doesn't affect the homeowners that are in that, on the side of that arroyo, and then there was another place just south of your place that we needed to look. So we may need a little bit of engineering after the survey, but Adelmo Medina can brief us on that at a later time.
Mr. Archileta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Fambro, we actually have an RFP out currently right now in Taos County for an on-call survey engineer, and so that engineer can provide that service for us, and we have a contract already, so that we can pay that, and it should be in place.
In place, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is awesome.
So the timeline on that, it appears as though we are looking at a month or so, maybe a month to two months before the work can begin, sounds like to me. Then there's also the question of the money that it's going to take to do that road, and I guess this is a good time to address it to this board, which was not in place when the prior board made a sort of a policy decision, that we do get a number of requests, of course, to adopt new roads, and the decision that the prior board had made would be whatever district that road was in, whatever funds it took to complete the work would come out of that particular Commissioner's discretionary funds in the road department.
How much do I have there, Mr. Chairman?
Well, that's gonna depend somewhat on Leandro, he's the man with the purse strings.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
But there'll no doubt be enough within your budget to take care of that road. And I guess at some point, we may reconsider that policy, if the board chooses, we could put it on the agenda, but that is where we left it with the prior board. Well, thank you very much for coming, and we look forward to getting that road done for you. It's an important road, and we appreciate your assistance with it.
Well, thanks very much for the reassurance.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens' concerns? Yes, could you please step to the podium and repeat your name for us in front of the mic, so that the county clerk can record it?
Okay.
You might want to bring that mic down a little.
There maybe?
That's perfect, thank you.
Very short. I'm here because, and I don't know if I'm in the right place, but I picked up some petitions from the people over there, and we're very concerned about the clinics closing up. I heard that the other one is either cutting down or closing up too, and I don't know if there's anything that we could do, if Holy Cross wants to close, maybe we could bring somebody else, or, I don't know. But we need help.
Mr. Chairman, I met with Ms. Gonzalez last week, and she had told me they were working on a petition. And would you like to read what your petition states, Ms. Gonzalez?
What it says?
What it says, yes.
Okay, it's a petition to leave the Pinasco Rural Health Clinic open. We, the undersigned, are petitioning to leave the Pinasco Rural Health Clinic open. The clinic has been enchanted the well-being of the community by providing high-quality, primary medical care, and other related healthcare services to those in need. Closing the Pinasco clinic will be cause extreme hardship for those in need of immediate medical attention, and for the community members that do not have the transportation needed to drive into Taos or Españoola. And we have a lot of comments from people, I picked up 300 signatures, and more people were calling that they wanted assigned too, but I didn't get a chance to go pick up anymore, but I have 300 signatures here, and some of them have different comments on it, and we feel that we can't do without a clinic up there, you know. We have too many little communities around there, little areas, you know. We get some people sometimes from Truchas, from Ojos Arco, Trampas, Rey Lucio, Pinasco, Rodarte, Yano, Yano Largo, Vadito, Placitas, and there's some people, elderly people, that cannot afford to come to the doctor any place, they don't have transportation. And they're older people, you know, that can't, their families take them to the clinic, they pick them up for diabetes, it's the same thing, we have a lot of people that need to be checking their sugar, and this is gonna be a hardship on some people.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would like you to, the CEO, interim CEO of Holy Cross is here, and I'm wondering if the petition is more appropriate to give to Cindy or to give to the commission. I'd like you, after the meeting, she'll address some of your concerns when she speaks, and I'd like you to meet with her. And also, if you would come forward, we're having a town hall meeting in Pinasco, and if you want to come and get this flyer, it is March 28th, and Holy Cross will be present to answer additional questions and to help people find new primary care providers, and also El Centro will. In relation to El Centro, I did put a petition in front of the commission that's being circulated by El Centro, because they too, well, they very well could close if they lose their federal funding come September, October, so this is more of a broader crisis than just Holy Cross. And this is, you'll see on your desk, this is the petition that El Centro is circulating. I've already signed it. I would really encourage you to sign in three different places, and if you'd give that back to me, I would get that over to El Centro. Ms. Gonzalez, I do appreciate you being here. I think I told you at that point that, as much as it breaks my heart that you would come and circulate a petition on behalf of mostly elderly people, that we cannot force Holy Cross Hospital to keep that clinic open.
That's true.
But I do appreciate you coming here, and what do you think, Mr. Chairman? Should she give the petition to us, or give it to Cindy? How many people do you have?
I have what, 300 signatures that I picked up in about a week? But everybody was calling me that they wanted to sign it too, I just couldn't get to them, you know. So I know the people there are very, actually afraid, scared, because they, some of them don't have transportation, some of them have to be, and for emergencies, you know, and for people that are really actually sick.
Ms. Gonzalez, we'll take a copy of the petition, of course, we can get a copy to Ms. Bradley if she requests. This is an item on the agenda, the closure of the Pinasco Health Clinic, and so if you have the time to stay with us, it's going to be later in the meeting, we're going to discuss it fully.
Okay.
That time.
I'd like to be here, I just need to go pick up my daughter, because she has an appointment at 3:00 up to Pinasco, but I'd stay as long as I can.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Romero, welcome.
We could amend the agenda to listen to that item at this point?
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, it is.
I'll second that.
Do I give this to? Oh, there we go.
You have a motion and a second on the table, is there any discussion?
I do also have a copy of the one for the El Centro. Do you want me to leave it too? Because that's another issue, no, since the other ones, either they're gonna close or they're cutting down.
Please, thank you. Let's see, where would the motion move the item to? Maybe it should be, it is a decision item, so shall we move it to?
Mr. Chairman, possibly immediately after awards and recognitions?
That's what I was thinking, Commissioner.
I'll stick around, because I'd like to know what, you know, what it is, that maybe we can do something.
So we have a motion to move item number 14 and make it item number eight. Any further discussion? No, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yes. Are there any other citizens? Mr. Martinez?
And I'll make it brief, it's not much that I have, it's pretty much a special request. Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners. My name is Arminio Martinez, and it's regarding an easement on Camino del Rio, right east of this complex, that's owned, I believe, from the county. And it's probably just, oh, maybe 20, 30 feet, I guess, from that one transformer. And I bought a house on 404 Mora, which is adjacent in that corner, and I'm in the process of obtaining a lease purchase agreement from Mr. Roy Cunningham for a half-acre lot. And we're pretty much in the planning stages. This would pretty much, I guess the purchase price would pretty much be considered, if this is a possibility. And if the Commissioners are willing to, for that utility easement, if they're willing to give me a monetary, I guess, price tag, and if I can afford it, I certainly would like to meet with this body again at some other point. But that's pretty much my request.
Let's see, I know that this road has been in dispute in one fashion or another, I guess I would ask Mr. Malone to...
I don't think it's...
Mr. Chairman, that lawsuit was resolved in the county's favor several years ago. It's Casitas del Rio.
Yes.
And the determination, I'd have to go back and check the exact legal significance, because it's, we're talking about a year and a half or two years ago now, but the county prevailed in that litigation, and that would have made it a public road, but I can't give you more information beyond that at this point. So I'm not sure whether we have the power to grant the easement or not, I'm not sure if it came out as a county road or merely a private-public road, I don't remember the details, but it's no longer a private road.
So the possibility exists that it would be a public road, that you would have the right to use like anybody else?
Well, with, again, the utility excavation permit from the county, if it's determined that it's a county road, we're just gonna have to look into that and see the exact determination in that lawsuit.
I would just suggest then that you stay in touch with our county attorney, and once he looks into it, he can tell you the status of that road, and then you can see where you stand with it.
Okay, yes, and in fact, the seller, Mr. Barry, God, I forgot, was the original owner going back 30 years, and he actually, I think Mr. Malone is right insofar as the county attorney told me to come before this body to request that, simply because it's not our easement, it's either the county's or nobody's. So we're pretty much in limbo, I guess, at this point, and I'll provide, Mr. Chairman, all the information, documentation that I may have, and I'll visit with Mr. Malone.
And there is a procedure to utilize public roads for private utility easements that you would have to follow, and we'll just wait and see what our county attorney determines, and if we need to place it on the agenda for a decision in the future, we'll do so.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for your time, and happy St. Patrick's. Commissioner Gallegos, I guess you're out of line today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arminio. Mr. Thielke. Oh, first, Mr. Valdez.
I'm sorry, good morning. All right. It's always good to give others a chance as well. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak before you, Chairman Blenkinherne, the rest of your commission, citizens of the community. We have an event, this is just basically an informational discussion, if you want, if you will, about an event that's gonna be taking place on April 10th from 9:00 to 4:00 at the Taos County Agricultural Center. We're calling, we've been doing this biannually as a resource fair, but this has a different twist to it because of the fact that we've had a lot of agricultural lands that have been caught in this discussion, or this dissolution of losing their agricultural exemption, or agricultural special methods of valuation. So this whole thing has become a kind of a hot topic for us, and so we're trying to provide some sort of venue, or at least some information, education to the public on how they can restore those agricultural lands to some point where they become productive again, given the drought and those kind of things. We do have a committee, and have been visiting, or meeting regularly, and we'll meet again on the 20/31st to finalize all the details of this particular fair and activity and event. And I have a few folks here that can share a little more information on what we've been doing and working up to this point, and what we continue to work on. With us today is Darlene Behill, your former assessor, she's one of the positive people that has been on this committee, that has the expertise from the assessor's point of view. Tobias Martinez, you probably know him as well, he's been on this SB 112 issue and has been carrying the ball all this time, for all this time as well, so. And then Bobby De Herrera, she's your former employee as well, so we have some experts here that know this issue, and we have brought them into our team to help us how to develop this thing out, so that we can have a productive affair or event, so that public can be educated about how they can bring their lands back into production. With that, I'd like to call on them to come up and say a few words.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
Commissioner, could we put this flyer up on our screen?
And then for the public, probably, yeah. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I just want to take a minute, most of what needs to be shared will be shared by Darlene and Bobby. They thought they were gonna retire, but they're back, probably working harder than they have for a good part of their life.
Toby, we know you are here, but could you please state your name for the county clerk?
Toby Martinez, just been active in this issue. Some of you, Commissioner Fambro and Commissioner O'Donnell, were at a meeting back in May 10th of last year, where a lot of this kind of started, and since then, we've been meeting every two weeks, both Bobby and Darlene and Tony, and about 20 other folks have been meeting and charting the course, including what was mentioned by Tony, the S-112 and House 112, which now is on the consent calendar, and so it should be moving on to the governor, hopefully, and be signed by the governor. It provides for some relief in the way, in the sense of considering the drought, as long as we're in a moderate drought situation, which is basically called by the Department of Agriculture, people will have an opportunity to retain that special method of valuation. They will have to do things that demonstrate, but at least that relief will be provided. With that, Darlene and Bobby and several members of the committee have been working very hard in charting the course to basically provide some other help, which is really where I think most of the answers need to come, in terms of how do you get this lands back into agricultural production. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission.
Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Archileta, Mr. Malone, and good morning to all and the viewing audience. It's nice to be in front of you once again, certainly under a different capacity, but nonetheless, as Tony has indicated, you know, this fair is a little bit different than the other fairs that have been held, and that is because of the main focus of losing agricultural classification, which you all know I was very much involved when we started the reappraisal on the ground in the assessor's office. And so I stand before you as a concerned citizen, and certainly Bobby and many others have been involved in putting this flyer together. Actually, I don't think enough credit is given to Sue Ann and Monica, who actually had eyes on this flyer, you know, their eyes were on it as well as participating. But nonetheless, Bobby and I took some time and worked at the extension office to put this flyer together. What I'd like to point out, and more so for the viewing audience, I believe everyone has a copy in their hands of the actual flyer, but I'm gonna read the questions more so for the viewing audience, and that is, we're once again focusing on the loss of ag here in Taos. And so the first question here is, have you or do you know anyone who has lost their agricultural classification? Are you or anyone you know concerned about losing agricultural classification? Are you a farmer or rancher interested in working additional lands, and connect with farmers and ranchers for possible job opportunities? Now, these questions have been posed on this flyer in hopes that this will draw in, you know, those individuals that have lost their ag and/or are potentially in fear of losing, as well as networking, because we realize that in this community is that networking is very important, and it's very common. So we're hoping that these questions will bring them in, and another couple of things I'd like to point out on the flyer, my understanding is fairly new, and that is the roundtable discussion. We have experts in the community that have been... We have experts in the community that have been farming and ranching for many, many years and have made it happen. And so we're going to hopefully draw from their experience, their knowledge. And there's two times in which these roundtable discussions will, will be held. And one is at 10:30 a.m. and the other is at 1:30 p.m. And so once again, this fair, I think, is going to be an eye-opener and hopefully will help those individuals that are, that are out there very concerned about losing ag or reinstating it. In addition, we have come up with a, and this, I believe, was handed over to you this morning. This was an attempt to actually invite, this is an invite, it's a postcard. It will be geared, it's geared to address those that have lost the ag. And I have talked to our current county assessor, Abel Montoya, who is in line and, and happy to provide us with the information from 2014 as well as 2015, the individuals that lost the agricultural classification. So this is going to be a special invite to them and in hopes of getting them there and getting them started again if they're interested in, in revitalizing their, their lands with ag. And so just kind of a little idea of what we're sending out. And I believe at this time, I've basically kind of pointed out the, what I think is most important to, to look for on this flyer, what's new, and asking that each and every one of you, please, please pass the word. We all know how that works here in Taos. You've got to be able to, you know, just pass that word on in hopes that this will be a great event, I have no doubt.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I understand that, and just so you know, there are efforts that are, are being put together right now, and I believe Toby knows more on this, but the radio station, I think, will be doing some advertising through the radio station. We're going to post the flyers everywhere we can. We're doing a lot of digital emails, group emailing, so it's, it's, we're working very hard to get the word out there.
Welcome back to Taos County, Darlene and Bobby. It's nice to see you here and we really appreciate the work you're doing on this. It's an important event. It's on April 10th. And, you know, I think it is going to be a, a great event to educate and encourage people to be able to use their lands for agricultural purposes in the tradition of Taos County. And we can't thank you enough for your expertise and efforts. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you very much for being here. And I think we also need to give the ag team credit for the work and, and you are part of that ag team. And I would like to help on that day, so let me know what I could do. And I'll have the county manager produce more flyers and I will put them up in the Penasco area. So keep me on the list and let me know what...
Can I have an additional copy?
Yes, I would like...
And you can send it up to any distro list?
Yes, I would. I, I just usually go to the bulletin boards and over to Picadis Pueblo. And, Mr. Chairman, this was, House Bill 112 was my campaign promise that I would lobby. During my campaign, I said I would lobby for, to help people with the drought and the ag. And this bill, you have three years to rest your land, but this will extend that in case of the drought. This is a statewide initiative that will be, the law will be promulgated by the Taxation and Revenue Department. This is a bill that will benefit farmers and ranchers all across New Mexico. And as you know, you know, down south, they're having more extreme cases of drought. And I'm confident the governor will sign this because we have to take a look at the consequences of climate change. And we don't want to get stuck in the place that California is where they're running out of water and legislators are scrambling. And thank God that the legislators and Patricia Quintana, they had the foresight to realize that we've got to take action now to protect our lands because we don't know what's coming. So this will help save agricultural lands if they're being used, you know, you have to be using them. But I believe at one point I said that it would take an act of God to have HB 112 go through and that what I said was some things were worth fighting for even if we lost, but we didn't lose this one. And I'm elated. I'm absolutely elated. So thank you for all your hard work.
In order for the three-year resting period to be extended, there has to be a designation of drought. And will that be statewide or county to county? And who will make that determination?
Mr. Chairman, it is county to county. It is based on the first eight weeks of January forward, the first eight weeks. It is based on the U.S. Drought Monitor, which comes out every week, and it is county to county.
And, and what are the responsibilities of the landowner to do with their land in order to get the extension?
I'm sorry, would you ask that question again? My apologies.
I believe that the bill includes certain responsibilities that the landowner has to take on in order to qualify for the extension in, in the event of a drought.
Well, basically, that Senate Bill, House Bill 112 indicates clearly that you have to already be in an agricultural mode. And so, you know, I really think that that bill, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Candace O'Donnell, I'm glad it went through, but all those provisions have already been exercised at the assessor's office in the previous and even currently. It's, if you're, if you were working your lands and drought was affecting, we took all that into consideration. I believe this memorializes what's already being done. So, you know, it's important to remind everyone that this, this bill is basically memorializing what's being done, but it's more, it's, it's law. And you have to be, you have to be certainly taking all the measures to prove that you are, in fact, doing ag. But I think the important thing here is to communicate, that the property owner communicate with the assessor's office. You know, I'm in that resting period. I am taking advantage of the drought, the bill that hopefully that will pass, you know, that they're taking advantage of that. But they're still working the lands as if they're preparing it for when the rains come and whatever needs to be done to, to make sure that they're working the lands. So what I do want to say also is, in the future, I know the committee's, you know, very adamant about going forward and taking other measures to help the elderly, for example, those that cannot work the land. You know, what do we do there? Because that was one of the main concerns when a reappraisal took place and ag was removed is the individuals that, you, you all saw the main, the articles in the, in the newspaper. It was around the elderly and those that could no longer work the land. So, you know, there's been some ideas out there and we'll see what the future has in store, but I believe the committee is going to also proceed, you know, continue with trying to remedy that. Meanwhile, it's important that the community help, that we help ourselves. And I, I know each and every one of you being in government knows that at the legislative level, they are very, very concerned about us helping ourselves here in the community. And, and when they see us do that, then they're more willing to help us, so.
I think this fair is going to be a very big part of that, very big. Toby?
Mr. Chairman, just to give a couple of examples of what it means working the land. Many people have prairie dogs, they have what many people call Chinese elms, actually Siberian elm. If they're working on getting rid of those things and, and if they're grazing, that their fences are maintained and their ditches are, are working order. I have an example for, I have an example where an individual plowed his land, dised it, but there was no way to really irrigate it. So for three years, it just sat there. Well, without this drought provision, basically would have lost the, the special method of valuation. So that's just one of the ways it'll, it'll work. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? You don't have to demonstrate production during the drought years. You just have to show that you're working towards production when the, when the water returns.
Mr. Chairman, that goes back to the bona fide effort, just providing...
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, it does have to, you do have to have ag land in production the previous year. If the governor signs this bill, it will take effect July 2016. And when I was down testifying, Representative Harper called in Taxation and Revenue because there was confusion among assessors of how to implement this bill. So now the tax and rev is involved. It'll clearly define the methods to kick in this new law because there was disagreement among assessors as to how to implement it. So when tax and rev came in, it, it helped to solidify, you know, how to do that. And I do believe that the, the law states to you, you would have to swear with an oath of office that you are using the la, the land. And so that would prevent a concern of people taking advantage of the ag exemption when they're not using it.
If I could just say two last things and I'll certainly step back. You know, I, I want to remind everyone, it's very important to communicate with the assessor's office and, you know, it's, I think through communication, there could be some, certainly a different outcome. You know, just, I've learned, or I learned while I was in there, that often after you got together with a person, you, you could really understand a little bit of more what was happening. And so I think the letters that I believe there's, they continue to send out really open that line of communication. But I'm hoping the fair, because you'll see that the assessor's office will be there, that they will, the people will view them as a friendly face and not necessarily the, the bad people. They, they can certainly work very well with the community if the community will allow them to. And one last note, and, and that is to pass the word, spread the word. This is very important. I think this fair is a, going to be something that everyone can take something, take away something positive.
Thank you again. We're proud of your efforts and, and both, both as a county assessor and our current county assessor, I think this is a really proactive step. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, could you pass them, we have some people from Penasco, and I, I just wanted to say one more thing about HB 112. It had the support of the New Mexico Cattle Growers, the Wool Growers Association, the NMAC Assessor's Office, on and on. It had a broad endorsement from all kinds of groups.
Did you say nothing yet?
Yes, Ms. Gonzalez, please, come to the podium.
I have talked to Candace about this problem. And now that you're talking about drought, I, we have a problem in Rodarte that the water table is so high. And then they started making the people build those septics, you know, that are high. So the water started backing out to where, I'm having trouble with my septic. First, they built the, the county built that building and they piled up the dirt. No, so the water started backing out to the properties that are on top. And then another lady, that my neighbor had to build another septic tank. And that did it all. That, that's when I really started having with, trouble with my septic. The water is so high, you dig, I dug different holes there and the water is three feet, two and a half feet, two feet right next to, we can't even build any septics there. And I don't know if there's anything you people can do, but I think it's a community problem, not just my problem. And building those things there are, I think, making more, worse, making it worse than, than it was before. I never had trouble with my septic and I've lived there for 56 years. And then they started building those things up and I started having trouble right away. So I don't know, like I said, if there's anything that can be done or checked into.
It's more in the jurisdiction of the New Mexico Environmental Department and, and so...
Well, I've talked to Peter and, and I've talked to several people and nobody seems to give me an answer. They don't know, they don't know what, what to do, I guess. So I don't know if you people can check into it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm on the board of the Elvaya Water and Sanitation District. Ms. Gonzalez, there's, there are, there is funding through CDBG and the New Mexico Water Board to provide funding for water and sanitation districts. And Penasco, as I understand, does not have a, a sanitation district. So you would be an ideal candidate to apply for funding to develop a, a sewer system in, in the Penasco area that would serve the community.
And where do you go for that? What do I need to do?
Um, I, I don't have all of the direct information, but if you have a card or address or name, phone number, we can touch base on that and I can direct you to some of the folks that work at Elvaya de los Rancho's and they can give you some more of that information.
Okay, yeah, because I've talked to different organizations and nobody has been able to help me, no? Okay, I'll, I'll try to get your number so I can call. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Thielke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I'm sorry that Arminio left. I had a question for him on that, on that easement. It's my understanding the easements are between adjoining landowners and that, I don't know if a house can be built that's landlocked. So I, and I don't think that's an issue for the county at all. It's, that's town business. And if he's going to run the bail bonds business out of that, he's going to need to, to go from residential to commercial. That's it on that one. I've had a month now to recover from your decision on, on abiding by, by a beta's obligations. I just got a, and, so I'm not going to be calling the new commission any nasty names or anything, but it's a kind of a heavy disappointment for me and, and probably, I'm not going to project on everybody else that was volunteering for the regional water plan, but that's kind of gotten thrown aside. I just got a recent notice from, I think it's, um, the State Engineers Office, or they want to hold a hearing in Taos soon to revise or update the regional water plan. And I don't know if, I, I don't see that this commission is too, is too friendly towards, towards the regional water plan since a beta now seems to be the only, the only thing that gets talked about.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
I believe myself and, and you were at the latest Regional Water Planning Committee meeting yesterday for three hours at the town of Taos that was attended by probably 60, 70 people. There were, I believe, as many as 15 different committees formed.
Oh, so that was yesterday?
Yeah.
I missed it.
And both myself and Chairman Blankenhorn were there. And other than a couple of comments, it was a very productive meeting and, and everything's moving forward at a pretty good clip, I might add.
And there were interested parties in participating in, in this again, rather than just wasting three years of our time?
Well, I don't have a definition of, of wasting time, but I thought the committee assignments and, and the energy that was in that room was, was very professional and proactive.
Oh, yeah.
To where I think by our April 29th...
Twenty...
It's either 28th or 29th or 30th meeting, there's going to be a lot of movement between, and the largest committee was the Asacias Committee and the Technical Committee, which are being headed by some really knowledgeable people and ones that understand what's, what's coming in, in front of us in the next few years. And instead of just waiting, I mean, they want to be proactive and make sure that we're ahead of everything that's coming. I thought it was a, a very uplifting meeting, even, you know, after the comments were made about certain things by certain, maybe not as well-informed people. We got past that and everybody worked together. It was, so I'm sorry you weren't there, but next time I'll make sure that you get, I got your email now.
So the internet was down for the whole weekend. We couldn't, we were back in the middle ages.
These notices were out since three weeks ago.
Yeah, I know.
I don't think that was a possibility.
I didn't mark it on the calendar.
But they've got a facilitator. We now have a local chairperson, Alan V. Hill, if he, he was railroaded into, because he missed the meeting as you did. So we're, next time you miss a meeting, Neil, I'm going to put you on every committee I can.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm kidding. But thank you. I'll make sure you get the email in the next meeting because I, it... because I, I think you're going to be, it was a very enjoyable process.
Thank you.
You know, and the mutuals are going to be a big part of that, too. I think we're going to identify some projects that need to be accomplished to repair some of the lines for the mutual domestics, which are currently losing a lot of water. It's going to go a long ways towards conserving the water that we have. So stay tuned.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I missed that meeting, too, and I was not on the email list, so I didn't know it was happening, and I'm going to get on the email list, because I am the representative to the southern region of the Regional Water Planning Steering Committees.
And that's, and that's what I think got, got left out of Abeta is the north region and the southern region. So that, that's been my, my main concern, if, that the focus isn't just on Abeta stakeholders. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, along those lines, if we have too many of us there, then we need to notice that meeting, because I, I came in and checked before I went. I didn't want to do a violation of Open Meetings Act, so we just need to make sure that if Commissioner O'Donnell is going to be part of that as well, that we don't do anything wrong by going to the meeting.
Yeah, we can just notice it. I think the meeting is April 29th.
Or 28th.
No, I got it. It's April 29th.
Because I'm not the end, they were, yeah. But that's most likely the day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Anyone else on Citizens Concerns? Mr. Hall. On a, on people whose name you clearly know, do you want me to insist that they say it? Thank you.
Stevens Hall.
She's just being nice to me. Morning, Stevens Hall.
Morning. The, the lease between the hospital and the county, the amended, the amended and restated lease dated December 1, 2001 calls for several things. Among them are, is Section 4 rents, THS, Taos Health Systems shall make rent payments during the term of this lease as provided below. At section, subsection A, they have to make rent payments to amortize the tax exempt bonds that were issued at that point in time, December 2001. And they did, I suppose, because the bonds have been paid off. Section B says rent payments for medical services equipment. The rent payment stipulated under this subsection B shall be at the yearly rate of $80,000 payable by THS as provided in the next sentence. THS, for the purpose of acquiring medical services equipment for use by the county and providing healthcare-related services to the residents of the county. THS shall make rent payments under this subsection B no later than May 31st of any fiscal year of THS in which THS has not been obligated to make rent payments under subsection A of this section. That's the rent payments for the, the bonds. Their IRS 990, Return of Organization Exempt from Income Tax for the year, for 2008 fiscal year, their fiscal year, 1 June 2008 to 31 May 2009, Part 10, The Balance Sheet, liabilities, line 20, tax-exempt bond liabilities beginning of the year, $3,025,000, $3,025,274, end of year, zero. So, without knowing the exact date, I am certain beyond doubt that those bonds were paid off in December of 2008. At that point in time, subsection B kicked into effect and required that the hospital pay this county and the residents of this community $80,000 a year for medical services-related equipment, and I wonder if that's being done. No, that was to begin, no later than fiscal, the end of fiscal year 2009, May 31st, 2009. If you read the, the section, it may be that that could be prorated for that, for that given year, but for every year thereafter, they were required to pay $80,000 for medical equipment. Subsection E talks about payment of, to purchase an ambulance. At the commencement of the first lease year, THS shall purchase for the county a new ambulance. Each lease year thereafter, THS shall pay the county a sum equal to one-half of the cost of a new ambulance of similar specifications at the then prevailing cost, not $70,000, not $140,000, but meet the specifications that the county wants. Subsection 7, representations and warranties by THS. THS hereby represents and warrants the following, subsection G, obligation to pay and perform unconditional. THS acknowledges the obligation to make the rent payments and other payments due under this lease and to perform the other agreements herein shall be absolute and unconditional and shall not be subject to diminution by set-off, counterclaim, restatement, or otherwise. Section 11, Equipment and Other Personal Property, subsection B, Equipment and Property Lists. THS agrees to keep and annually update its list of county equipment and county property and to deliver copies thereof to the county. Subsection B, THS Equipment. Upon written request by the county to THS, THS shall provide the county with a copy of its fixed asset list generally describing all the equipment owned or leased by THS. Subsection E, Care of Equipment and County Property. Sub-subsection I, Maintenance, or Number 1, Maintenance and Other Charges. THS shall at its own expense keep all the equipment and the county property in good order, repair, and operating condition. Section 12, Financial Reporting Requirements of THS. THS shall during the term of this lease provide the county subsection A, annually within 30 days after its receipt by THS, an audited and certified balance sheet and statement of earnings of THS prepared by an independent certified public accountant in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles applied on a consistent, on a consistent basis. Subsection B, Honor Before the 30th of the first month following each fiscal quarter of THS, a review statement of earnings for such fiscal quarter. Subsection C, periodically, upon request by the county but not more frequently than monthly, a review statement of earnings of THS for the relevant period, and D, periodically, upon request by the county but not more frequently than annually, a copy of THS's budget. THS agrees that the county shall have the right to inspect, examine, and to make copies of the financial books and records of any and all accounts, financial data, income, and other tax returns of THS insofar as they relate to the financial operations of the hospital. The county agrees that it will not release any information received pursuant to this section to any non-governmental person except as required by law without THS's prior written consent. That last sentence needs to be stricken.
Mr. Hall, you're not going to read us the whole lease, are you?
No. Section 13, I'm almost there. The THS Contracts and Agreements. THS and the county hereby acknowledge the New Mexico Supreme Court has set forth standards for determining whether not private nonprofit corporations that lease hospitals from governing entities may be treated as an alter ego of the public entity. It goes on to cite the Memorial Medical Center versus Tadic Construction. The county hereby acknowledges that it was not involved in the creations, and so on and so forth. The parties thereby have determined which determination has been confirmed by the New Mexico Attorney General by letter dated October 9, 2001. I've not been able to find that yet, letter yet. I've got somebody looking for me at the Attorney General's office. I don't believe it exists, or it doesn't, it doesn't, it's, it's not lying about somewhere. And THS does not meet the standards set forth by the Supreme Court, and therefore THS is not treated as an alter ego of the county. I believe TH is, THS is an alter ego. Section 14, Title to Improvements. All improvements consisting of personal property to the extent financed with proceeds of the 2001 bonds and all improvements consisting of real property improvements, regardless of how they are financed, shall be deemed to be the property of the county, and THS shall have no ownership interest in such improvements. THS shall deliver to the county such deeds, bills of sale, or other documents that the county may reasonably request from time to time to better evidence the county's ownership of the improvements pursuant to this section 14. Implicit, if not explicit, in every one of those sections is the obligation, I believe, of this board to maintain oversight of what is owned by this community with, with respect to the hospital, and I don't believe it's being done. You can exercise that oversight. At a special meeting in February 2011, February 8th, attended according to the minutes by Rick Eisenry and Carol Neely of Holy Cross Hospital, under Section 5, Budget Matters, Agenda Item 5, Budget Matters, Discussion and Consideration of Proposed Agreement to Prepay Rents Under Holy Cross Hospital Lease, and I'm reading now from the minutes, and this is Carol Neely speaking. The lease with the county dated back in 2001 provides that once certain bonds are paid off, which they currently are, we'll begin paying $80,000 a year to the county for the purchase of medical equipment for the Taos County residents, and that scheduled payment is scheduled to begin during the 2011 fiscal year, June 2011. She's wrong. That began, as I said, the moment those bonds were paid off in December of 2008. I hope they've been making that payment. At that meeting in February of 2011, this body, and its form in 2011, agreed to accept a prepayment of $770,000 of, with respect to this $80,000 a year payment for medical equipment, with the stipulation that if it was legal to accept that payment, and I don't believe that it was. I believe it was inappropriate based on what I know about Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services, and what they required with respect to monies that would be used to leverage federal dollars to take care of the indigent. The county agreed to accept that payment with the stipulation that each year, despite accepting that payment each year, the hospital would continue to make that $80,000 a year payment. And Peter Hofstadter was notified of that the next day. This is a letter to Mr. Hofstadter.
Okay, Stevens, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off here. It's been well past the three minutes. So the basic premise, the basic question that you have is whether or not we've been getting the $80,000 per year?
And, and to sum up, at the February meeting of the Holy Cross Hospital Board, it was the report that I don't believe you have a copy of yet, but that was mentioned back in January with respect to making an assessment, coming up with an assessment, hiring an engineer to assess the state of affairs with respect to infrastructure at the hospital. I don't believe you have that report. I don't know why, but it was discussed at the February meeting of the, of the board at Taos Health Systems, and it was said that $2.6 million would be needed to update in the next five years mechanical and electrical equipment, that portion of the infrastructure. And I'm quoting now, it was said that considerably more would be needed for medical equipment. It seems to me that, again, with this lease, how can, something, something's not right here. If the hospital is not being maintained properly, if, if $2.6 million for mechanical and electrical and millions of dollars more for medical equipment, how is this hospital being run? At the, and I, one last comment, Mr. Chairman, at the, I went back and looked at the minutes for 2000, began to look at the minutes for 2010 and 11, and at that point, and that was the, the point in time in which the hospital came and asked for this additional leveraging of funds because of their financial difficulties. When you look at their minutes, their financial statements and their, and their financial discussions are, were considered in a consent agenda, a consent agenda. They weren't discussed, they weren't talked about, and a consent agenda. And in the course of the October 2010 meeting, Peter Hofstadter spoke about having to return $2,236,000, I believe, $550,000 in federal monies because the hospital had not been able to meet the requirements of the demonstration project they had signed up for with respect to Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services. And, and, and they come and they ask during that timeframe for help. I, I, there's, there's so much here that I don't understand with respect to the operation and the oversight of that hospital. And I think a great deal of, a great deal more oversight and a great deal more investigation needs to be done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stevens. Are we getting the $80,000 a year in the lease? Steve? The $80,000 a year payments, or Steve or Bob, whoever wants to...
Well, it's my understanding, and I haven't researched what Mr. Hall is talking about, but it's my understanding, what I have looked at, is that the, the prepayment was in lieu of the $80,000 for the period of the prepayment, which I believe was 10 years.
Right. That's what I thought. And we do get the, and we do get the ambulance. But Mr. Hall, come to the committee meetings and, and you'll learn more about the finances and all that's, that's happened. And so, thank you. I'm, I'm going to have to decline your request. No, not, not today. Come to the committee meeting. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board? If not, then we'll move on to the next item, which is...
Mr. Chairman, I do believe Ms. Bradley had her hand up for a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it.
Commissioners, I'm not sure what, the upcoming agenda item, how much of this would pertain to that, but I do have a couple of other announcements that I would like to make. And would first talk about, we, we continue to look at the hospital's financials. And as I've shared in many past meetings, the hospital continues to have declining revenue from Medicare, Medicaid, all of our payers. And as a result, we're operating somewhere between 20 and 25 days cash on hand. And we continue to work on the financials. Our most recent decision, just this week, yesterday, was to eliminate the chief medical officer position from the hospital. That's the position held by Dr. Otisa Pino, and she and I have had discussions over the last month about the financial condition of the hospital, and she has submitted her resignation effective April 10th, and we will not refill that position. Most smaller rural hospitals do not have that CMO position, and it's been a wonderful asset for the hospital for the last four years that she's filled the position and she's accomplished a great deal. But we will have to rearrange those responsibilities among the rest of the members of the ATM and the medical staff. And you'll continue to hear from the hospital about more things that we're doing to make cuts in our budget to shore up those financial difficulties. I would just respond to Mr. Hall's comments about $2.6 million. The building is 20, past 20 years old, and so just like your home, just like schools, just like all other buildings, they have to be maintained. And at 20 and 25 years, a lot of the mechanical and electrical systems begin to reach the end of their natural life. And a perfect example is that we have two boilers that support the hospital, and a week ago, one of them died. It's, it's over 20 years old, and so we're looking at spending $88,000 to replace that boiler. And we have those kinds of expenses all the time. The $2.6 million, I think those are very valid expenses, and, and we will be bringing that to the county commissioners in time when we gather all the rest of the information that we want to present. And the cost of medical equipment is enormous, and we will also bring and share some of that information with you. And I will say the rest of my comments, I guess, and on your agenda item concerning the clinic. So thank you. Any questions that I can answer?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I just wanted to again say that I appreciate Ms. Bradley working with us and sending a representative up to the town hall meeting on the 28th to help assist Penasco patients.
Yeah, we do appreciate the hospital's communication. Thank you very much. If there are no other comments from, under this item, then we'll move to the approval of the minutes on the March 3 meeting. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I so move with several additions. And is this appropriate time to bring up those additions, or do I need a second?
No, it, it's going to be a motion to add to the minutes?
Yes.
Well, then tell us what they are.
All right. On page four, the minutes, where it reads 21 and 41, it should be 2,100 and 4,100. Also, relating to, I believe I said in the hospital discussion, if anything can be done to extend the closure date, and, and those are my changes to the minutes. Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second to Commissioner O'Donnell's motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, please call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number seven, Awards and Recognition. This is a presentation for our Employee of the Month for March 2015, and it will be presented to David Martinez from the Planning Department. to David Martinez from the Planning Department. Mr. Hara Mio.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if I could ask you to come down? Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission, County Manager Archuleta and Mr. Malone. It's my pleasure to bring up Mr. Edward Vahild, Acting Planning Director, as well as Jessica Gutierrez, Chief Building Inspector, and David Martinez. I'm here to announce the Employee of the Month is David Martinez. David is a Building Inspector II for the Planning Department, and he's been selected for this honor for his professionalism in the field and in the department. He goes above and beyond the expectations, repeatedly by performing inspections in a timely fashion in instances where circumstances allow, the very day an inspection is requested. Further, Mr. Martinez exceeds expectations by providing individuals, he has assigned the county, providing individuals his assigned county-issued cellphone number so that individuals may contact him directly with building-related questions. Having worked in the construction sector for many years prior to becoming an inspector, Mr. Martinez also understands the importance and urgency in releasing building permits and performing the inspections in a timely manner so that the economic development may continue to grow in Taos County, allowing contractors, owners, owner builders, and work crews to continue working with little or no interruption provided by prompt inspections. The Employee Action Committee is proud to announce that David Martinez is the Employee of the Month for the month of March, and with that, he's gonna receive eight hours paid administrative time off and a $25 gift card. Thank you, David, for your service to Taos County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone.
On behalf of the entire Taos County Planning Department, I wish to congratulate Mr. David Martinez. The Planning Department and Taos County are very fortunate to have an employee as Mr. Martinez's caliber. In fact, I am very proud of all the employees of the Taos County Planning Department and the work ethic that they all display. As the building season fast approaches, the Planning Department is optimistic that building permits submitted will increase and that the Taos County residents will find employment. Thank you to Mr. Martinez and all Planning Department employees for their hard work and dedication.
Thank you, David, and thanks to the whole Planning Department. You guys are doing a great job down there. We do hope that you get a lot more permits coming up. So, let's see, we had agreed to move the Pinasco item, but now I'm starting to get worried about Chris and Sue and Jolene having to wade through that. That could be lengthy. Commissioner, should we do the other presentations first?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, we already put off the bridges one time before, and unfortunately, Ms. Romero Rainey was not able to stay with us, and I think we're giving the wrong impression to a very worthwhile program if we continue to put them off.
So, is that in the form of a motion to readjust the agenda another time, one more time, and put Pinasco as number nine?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. Was that a motion?
Yes, that is a motion. Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Please.
Yes.
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 Yes. On to item 8A. This is a presentation on the all-important Firewise Communities USA Recognition Program from Chris Cotay, Coordinator, and Nathan Sanchez, our Chief Planner. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone. Happy St. Patrick's Day. In the past couple of years, we've introduced five firewise communities in Taos County. And to back up that program a little bit, I wanted to describe the Firewise program, and I have a magic lantern show here to help me out. So, the Firewise community, Firewise is a nationally recognized program, in fact, internationally recognized program, to help communities pick themselves up and protect themselves from wildfire. So, this is what we'll cover, the program, understanding wildfire, how homes ignite, hazard assessments, construction, landscaping, and the program as we're dealing with it here in Taos County. And so, with adequate planning and cooperation, we can avoid these disasters. It's like a, it's a natural phenomenon, like a hurricane or like a tornado, or earthquake, we can protect ourselves from it. We don't have to watch these homes burn and firefighters die and people. Put dozens, even hundreds of homes at risk simultaneously, and it's unnecessary if we take the precautions to protect ourselves. So, that's the basic understanding of the program. So, wildfire has been around for millennia. It's a natural process, it's a necessary process, and we're discovering now, as we deny the mountains and the forests wildfire, that we're having this tremendous fuel buildup, and it's getting us ever deeper into trouble. So, we have to learn how to live with it, how to adapt to it. And in 1910, there was a fire burned in the west about the size of Connecticut, and that basically established fire policy here in the United States for 100% suppression. Declared war on fire, and it's got us into a little bit of a mess. Now, also, as we're moving further and further into the mountains, people wanna live in the mountains, and we're calling that the wild and urban interface. How do homes ignite? There are three things that drive fire behavior: fuels, weather, and terrain. Surface fuels, surface fuels are the needle litter, the branches, the pine cones. A low-intensity fire will clean that up, and that's what's been happening, that's what needs to be happening. Now, there's ladder fuels, those are the low branches that get that fire up off the surface into the crowns. And then we have a crown fire. Crown fires are catastrophic, they destroy watersheds, communities. Another thing that drives fire behavior is the weather, the humidity, the temperature, wind speed and direction, and our drought, slope and aspect, or that's actually terrain, slope, aspect, chimneys, canyons, and we have plenty of that here. Now, hazard assessments. Low hazard areas are limited, wildland vegetation is not continuous, humid climate with short dry season. That's not us. Moderate hazard areas and high hazard areas, we have more of, where we have dense vegetation, we have canyon alignments, we have lots of fuels, lots of built-up fuels. Now, the home ignition zone is the area from the home or from a group of homes out to within 100 or 200 feet. If it's attached to the house, it's part of the house. There's a fire scientist in Montana who's been studying how homes ignite. More often, homes ignite actually from ember fallout, from flying firebrands that land against a fence, they pile up a fence, they drift like a blizzard, like snow, and they eddy out in pockets where there's fuels around a home, and they can catch your home on fire that way, on a cedar-shaped shingle roof, on decks, fences. So, that displays, you know, anything that's part of the house where it can catch embers. It's not even so often the radiant heat or the surface fire that comes up against the house. So, we have to rate our fire material, our building materials, composite shingles, metal, clay or cement roofs, that's what catches most buildings, is the roof. And also needles in the gutter, which will also then light the underlayment of the roof. The double pane or tempered glass and the enclosed leaves and faces, those will protect the house from the radiant heat and protect overhangs and attachments and remove those fuels from that area. You know, the cord of wood stacked on the deck is a problem. So, landscaping design, once again, the home ignition zone, 100 to 200 feet out, and the Zone 1 is 1 to 30 feet out. And we want low-flammable plants and landscape materials, prune limbs up to 10 feet, and mow and prune and water, and no firewood or propane tanks within 30 feet of the home. 30 to 100 feet out, fuel breaks, branches and leaves limbed up to 6 to 10 feet, and remove the heavy accumulation of flammable debris. So, we wanna get that fire on the ground, on the surface, get it out of the crowns. And if it, if, when these flaming brands come in and land in that area, they don't ladder up and get back in the canopy. And then 100 to 200 feet out is just for that, just to get it on the ground and keep it on the ground. And then the Firewise program is nationally recognized for communities to take proactive measures to prepare for wildfire. And the first step is to enlist a wild and urban interface specialist to complete a community assessment, and that's me, and state forestry. And then get organized as a board, and so, we have each one of these communities, and there's three more in the makes, they're organizing as committees, and then every year have a Firewise Day. And invest a minimum of $2 per capita annually. So, that's easy, just even with the chipper running and the board meetings and all that stuff, all the investment of time that goes into these communities is pretty tremendous. So, here's some samples of the, of the Community Firewise Days, Chipper Days. Next month, Vias Candido is gonna do a pine needle and debris removal day in cooperation with the Boy Scouts. They're gonna come around and rake and bundle things up. Firewise Education Days, and create a fuel removal project that enlists local volunteers. So, I'll show some examples of that. People are doing articles in the paper, presenting to the community, to the HOAs. And so, that's how we're spreading the word through the communities. And we're doing wildfire hazard assessments on private property and distributing homeowner tips and Firewise information sessions in neighborhood association meetings. So, there's, yeah, there's eight, well, actually, there's more than eight. There's a lot of communities now where we're starting to get inroads in and starting to get the word out a little more, how to protect your home, how to protect communities. This is a little redundant, it's establish a local Firewise Board, identify community goals, conduct outreach, and then submit an application to the Firewise program, the National Fire Protection Association. So, community-wide, planning and zoning statutes, street and address markings, and access to homes for firefighters, water supply, and evacuation plans and routes. And a lot of these communities have identified, you know, they're making plans, what if? El Salto is the first one to be recognized as a Firewise community. Vias Candido, Taos Canyon, Guayina Canyon, and Taos Ski Valley are our five current recognized nationally. And they've been working. Here's Edward working the chipper up there in El Salto and his crew. And so, people would come and drop stuff roadside, and they would feed it in the chipper, keep backing the chipper up the road and feeding it in. Taos Canyon has this meeting every year where they have a potluck, they do community education. Here's our friend Peter with Taos Water District explaining probably a thinning project. And here's some work on Guayina Canyon to open up the road and reduce fuels along the road for firefighters, ingress and egress for homeowners and firefighters, and possibly use as a fuel break. Here's a chipper day in Vias Candido. That's all I got for now, if anyone has any questions.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Chris, for all the work that you do. Any plans for the stakeout area? It seems to me that because of its access or its closeness to the highway, to Highway 68, and it's happened before where people just, smoking, they throw a cigarette butt out the window, and it started many fires. Do you have any plans to take care of this area? Seems to me like if a fire were to start in that area, and because of the terrain, it would probably be one of the most devastating fires that the Taos Valley could in fact see, and not to mention the amount of homes that are up there that are worth in excess of $1 million and more.
Yeah, I've looked into that area, I've driven around and taken a look, I've contacted a couple people, and basically, the reaction I got was, don't call us, we'll call you. So, maybe it's time to try again, and just keep, that's what you gotta do, is just keep reaching out and keep the education going.
Through their neighborhood association?
Yes.
If I could set something up, would you, would you show up?
Absolutely.
Please assist in that?
Yep.
Okay.
Jim?
Mr. Chairman, I, just to clarify, I was under the impression you had five in the works, and yesterday at that regional water meeting, I reported that you had five in place and were working on five, but what Commissioner Romero just brought up is a problem area, which is in my fire district, and I'd like to see anything we can do to help on that. So, that'd bring it to four, so only light a little bit, but I was under the impression it was five, but you're doing a great job, Chris, thank you for your enthusiasm, and keep it up.
And they were impressed, the representatives from Santa Fe were impressed with Taos County's progress in spite of the fact that Jim exaggerated a little.
An even number, I thought, I had the right one, but...
There's three other communities that are actually getting organized, but there's more that are talking about it anyway, so, kind of a vague number at this point.
Well, we made a lot of progress and look forward to more in the future. Thank you for the presentations.
Thank you all.
Now, on to the presentation by the Bridges Project for Education. We have Jolene Montoya and Sue Goldberg.
Hi, good morning. Thanks for allowing us some time this morning to share information about the Bridges Project. I'm Jolene, and this is Sue.
Hi there, thank you. Bridges is a very small organization with a huge mission, which is to expand college access in Taos County. We don't believe that college is for everybody, and recognize that there are a lot of ways to walk through life, but we strongly believe that if somebody wants to get a certificate in a trade, or get an associate degree, or get a bachelor's degree or master's degree, that everybody deserves equal access to the information about the process. And that's what we offer, is just information about the process. We work with people of all ages, and the majority of the people we work with are high school juniors and seniors. Some of them are headed to UNM Taos, some of them are headed to schools throughout the country. I'm not sure if you saw that. I'm not sure if you saw that. country. The work that we do is, we help people figure out where they might want to apply, we help them apply, and most importantly, we help them find the funding so that they're not going deep into debt, you know, to, to do what they want to accomplish. Bridges was founded in 97 by Rebecca Romero Rainey and Pamela Shepherd. And it was in the summer of 97 that Rebecca returned to Taos after her four years of college, realizing how fortunate she was in having the encouragement through her application process and through her four years of schooling, and recognizing that a lot of her peers from Taos High School didn't have the same encouragement or support. And she came back with an idea to start an organization. At the very same time, Pamela Shepherd, who was teaching at Northern here in Taos, recognized how many people could be taking college-level courses in Taos, this was before UNM Taos. And she hatched an idea to start an organization that would just simply help people apply and find the funding. And this organization would be one that would offer services for free. And so luckily, they met each other in that summer, and, and Bridges was founded a few months later, and has been ongoing since that time. The heart and soul of what we do is college counseling, financial aid counseling. We sit with one person at a time, maybe with parents as well, often with parents as well. And we move through the steps of the process of applying. In addition, we reach out into the community in a few different ways. For the last eight years, we've provided and hosted a college day at Baton Hall, just to expose people to various options. We, we work with every high school in the Taos area. In the past, we've worked with Cuesta and Penasco High School, when our capacity has allowed it to happen. We work with all of the agencies in the area that, that are youth-serving and also adult-serving. And we have a monthly column in the paper that just gives information. And we also do workshops and presentations in high schools. And although we work with every high school in the area, our, our real focus area is Taos High School, mainly because the population that we most want to serve is our, our kids whose parents have not had the opportunity to go to college, and who are going to be the first in their families to, to access college.
So since 97, we've served over 2,400 students and their families, one-on-one typically during a school year, we work with over 130 students. And then through our broader community programming, we reach over 500 people of all ages. Like Sue mentioned, the majority of our clients are first-generation to college students, and most of them are Pell-eligible, so they have demonstrated some financial need. We do work with GED students, adult students who are making midlife career changes, or who've decided to return to school, and, and then the majority of our students are high school students. We know, research shows that the strength of our educational systems and access to higher education and vocational training are directly correlated to the well-being of our communities. And we also know that the barriers that sometimes prevent people from accessing higher education and vocational training are disproportionately affect minority and lower-income students, which is really relevant to Taos County. And Bridges tries to respond to these issues through our programming. We are seeking support from central stakeholders in the community, such as the county, and the town of Taos, and UNM Taos, and the Taos Municipal Schools, to help support our efforts. And we know that your commitments and your scope are pretty tremendous, but if ever there's a time that you're able to support our programming, we would greatly appreciate it.
One of the most wonderful things about Bridges is experiencing the ripple effect that happens when, when students do break out of, you know, certain cycles and access higher education. One of the coolest things that ever happens at Bridges is that, you know, we'll, we'll work with a student and his parents, and then the kid, you know, goes to school, and then the mom comes back and says, you know, I'd like to go to UNM Taos. And we, we get to work with her as well. Or, you know, when, when somebody, you know, sees what's happened, you know, in his cousin's life, and says, you know, I'd like to give it a shot. So that, that kind of gratification is something that we, we live with daily, and it, and it's, it's, it's very, it's very cool. One of the most important things that we maintain is that people find the right fit. So the school that the person chooses to go to makes sense for that person's life, and doesn't, you know, overextend the family's resources or comfort level. So finding the right fit and, and doing it in a way that, you know, is really appropriate is, is something that has meant a lot to us through, through the 17 going on 18 years. So...
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us, or anything that we can further explain?
If there's no questions, I just want to say how grateful I am. It's amazing how many people you've helped over the past 17, 18 years. And I can't think of any more important effort than helping young people or old people within our community cross those bridges that you're, that you're helping them cross to, to find viable means of creating successful lives. So if, if you have a request for funding in the future, I would certainly support it. We do have some money in the budget for nonprofits, and I encourage you to come forth with a request.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
Move for a five-minute break, please.
We have a second?
Go ahead, a second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Do we have a motion to come back into session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next on the agenda, 8C, presentation from Awakening in Taos, Mark Gordon.
My name is Mark Gordon, I'm the writer, director, and producer of Awakening in Taos, which is a one-hour documentary in production for PBS, which tells the remarkable story of Mabel Dodge Luhon, how she came to Taos in 1917 and fell in love with the area. And it's an exciting story, it tells the early story of the, how the modern artist came to Taos and the art colony, and it involves people with the personal story of Mabel Dodge Luhon. We have the partnership of PBS New Mexico, the same producer, executive producer, who did Painting Taos, which was a documentary about the Taos Society of Artists. And we have the same distribution plan that they had for the previous project, which was broadcast nationally over three years, it was broadcast over 415 times on 85% of the regional PBS stations. And the information that we have, their carriage summer report of that broadcast, is that nearly 122 million viewers saw this film. So we have an important story that's important about the history of our state, and that is basically a love letter about the art, the culture, and the architecture and landscapes of Taos. And we're hoping that the effect will be to get a lot of buzz about Taos and to invite visitors here. Certainly at the end of the film, we say, "Visit Taos and New Mexico and live the adventure." So I'm here today, this is my second presentation before the county commissioners, I want to thank Stephen Archileta for inviting me, and I appreciate this time. I've had some preliminary talks with Bob Malone and Stephen Archileta, we're requesting funding for the final phase of production, and also the fees that will allow PBS New Mexico to distribute and aggressively broadcast this project when it's complete. There'll be a lot of coverage in New Mexico, but the demographics of our broadcast agreement really match the demographics and the geographical locations that the state of New Mexico is targeting for tourism. So we think that this interesting and entertaining story broadcast to an audience that's in the geographical areas and that are in the financial demographics that we're looking at, could have a very positive effect for tourism. In addition, this film will have a long shelf life, we have a three-year commitment from the participating television stations to run, that they can run the film up to three times a year. We're going to be broadcast, we're going to be broadcasting at, we're talking to international broadcasters, there's a huge market for one-hour documentary films about the Southwest. We have film festivals, streaming media, and there'll be theatrical screenings of the film, and also screenings at art museums throughout the country. So on May the, May the 14th at 7:00 PM, we're having a free public service event where we're doing a community outreach program, will be broadcast, will be rather screening at the TCA, several episodes from the film, which we'll be completing this summer, and letting people know what it is that we're doing, and enrolling and enlisting support. So it was determined that, I, I came last year, but we weren't sure what to do with this request for funding, and it's been suggested that I submit the proposal for the lodgers tax grant. And so I've delivered my copies to Valerie Montoya, so that's in place. And what I wanted to do was to take a moment and, and screen just a segment from the film, so you get an idea of what it is, and I hope it won't be too long, it's, it's brief. But this is, this is in 1917, Mabel's living in Greenwich Village, and she's drawn to
I awakened in the middle of the night. I lay staring into the darkness, when before my eyes, I saw a large image of Maurice's head. As I gazed, his face began to fade, and another face replaced it, a dark face with wide-apart eyes that stared at me with a strong look, intense and calm. This was an Indian face, and it affected me like a medicine. Maurice Stern was Mabel's third husband. It seemed to Mabel that she only loved Maurice with ease when they were separated. She believed that somehow, some way, she or Maurice could be fixed, so that they would fit together like the covers of a book. Maurice was a tremendous job for which Mabel was granted a temporary vacation. For their honeymoon, Mabel sent him alone to Santa Fe to paint Indians and to look in on her young son, John Evans. And while he was gone, Mabel searched all over New York for a new apartment and secured the top floor at 23 North Washington Square. Maurice wrote enthusiastic letters about New Mexico, and encouraged Mabel to join him.
Dearest girl, do you want an object in life? Save the Indians, their art and culture, reveal it to the world, what Emilia Hocken others are doing to benefit the Negroes and how you could if you wanted to, do for the Indians, and above all, there is somehow a strained relationship between you and the Indians. You could help the American people realize that there are other forms of civilization besides ours.
Maurice's invitation actually predicted Mabel's personal mission over the next 40 years of her life. I had always heard of people going to Florida or California, and more occasionally to the West, but no one ever went to the Southwest. Hardly anyone had ever even heard of Santa Fe. "Well, I want a vacation," I said to myself, "I feel like a change." I got it. My life broken two right then, the second half, a new world that replaced all the ways I had known with others, more strange and terrible and sweet than any I had ever been able to imagine. I had entered a new, passionate life, and I was done with reading books for a long time.
So by the time she gets to Santa Fe, again, she comes at a very opportune moment in New Mexico architectural history. This is, she comes literally at the time when the Pueblo Revival is being invented, the so-called Santa Fe style is being invented when Mabel arrives, you know? And I think she could see some possibilities.
Santa Fe was the strangest American town I had ever seen. In that bright December sunshine, the plaza was a queer mixture of oddities. There were wood carts drawn by burrows with the short legs of pinyon wood, led by dark-skinned Nuevo Mexicanos. In the plaza and under the portal at the governor's palace were the first Indians Mabel had ever seen. Going to tea at the Berlins was the first really tiresome thing that happened in Santa Fe. They were introduced to William Penhallow Henderson and his wife, Alice Corbin. She smiled, they all smiled, Maurice smiled. Mabel tried to and couldn't. I had an annoying feeling that there was something waiting for me in Taos. Maurice did not want to go, so I told him I would go with or without him. In 1917, it took 17 hours to drive the 75-mile trip to Taos from Santa Fe. The journey rumbled over dusty roads with vertical winding passages. Where the river came through the mountains, the thrilling part of the journey began, and followed a 30-mile route by auto over mountain trails that a goat must have planned. It was intensely silent out there without the stirring of anything, and yet I seemed to hear inside the silence, a hark! to hear inside the silence a high, continuous humming like a song and it made me happy. I felt unequal to the power that rose all about me. Surely no one had ever been able to dominate this country. At the top of the little cannon, they stood breathless in awe at the scene that stretched before them. Not a house in sight, not one human being.
I think when Mabel came out and saw it and saw that it hadn't really been trampled by American civilization, it was like, "Ah-ha! I found it. This is it. This is real. This has everything I'm really looking for to fulfill my own spiritual journey and my own cultural fulfillment."
If the people in Santa Fe had seen only the plaza, they were certainly right in saying there was nothing to Taos, but there was more to it than that. Taos instantly had a feeling that seemed to fit right for Mabel. There was something wonderful there. The very morning they arrived, Mabel rented the back rooms of the largest house in Taos for the winter. Mabel swiftly found her new home in Taos for $75 a month. Maurice was mortified. In 1950, Taos was an isolated New Mexican community. The year the Taos Society of Artists was founded, there were few art dealers between the Mississippi and the West Coast and no museums with contemporary art. Mabel always seemed to turn up in the right place at the right time. 1918 marked the peak of success for the Taos Society of Artists. Exhibitions by this group could be booked by simply covering the cost of transportation and insurance. Schools, women's clubs, and civic groups throughout the West soon sponsored annual shows by the Taos artists.
The Taos Art Colony was going without Mabel, but she certainly broadened it and added diversity and that constant effort to create a salon, bring people to town. Taos is pretty isolated. And so, Mabel had a strong influence on bringing those people to town. Some of them stuck.
When I began to compare life in Taos with Florence and Greenwich Village, that world of escapists I had lived among, that crowd of reformers, artists, writers, labor leaders, philosophers, and scientists, they had been so terribly busy at the job. That being the job of avoiding responsibility of themselves. Their activities had not left any time for merely being. Everything they had done took them away from the contemplation of the inner man.
Thank you very much. So, this is, I hope it wasn't too long, but I wanted you to get a sense of, of the movie and how we really are going to bring people into the history and the concept and the story of Taos. And we think that a lot of people will want to come here. And when they do come here, they're going to be educated, they're going to, they're going to have stories, they're going to want to know, "Where was Mabel Dodge's house? Where's the plaza? Let's go to the Pueblo. Was Tony Lujan here? When did D.H. Lawrence come?" And we talk about all of that in the production. So, you should all have received, I think, copies of the proposal that I'm submitting. And I would just humbly like to ask for your support so we can complete this important project. We are in the final phase. The total budget for this phase of the production is $110,000. We've raised, at this point, we've got $51,000 that we've raised. And in previous phases, we had 115 individuals who gave us gifts totaling $60,000. So, we have a, a program to make up the difference. And we're asking Taos County to make a contribution of $25,000. And so, we've got that request out there. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Thank you very much for the presentation. In the narration, is it politically correct to refer to Native Americans as Indians? Is it something that can be changed?
Of course. You know, we're, we're, in that particular section in the book at that time, those were the terms that they used. So, we were being historically accurate using their words, but if people find that offensive, we can say either Native Americans or American Indians.
It was a quote from 1917, right?
Yeah.
Right. But, but we know better now.
Okay.
It seems to me that, like, it's something that could be changed.
It's, it's not a problem at this phase because we're, we're editing everything. I'll make a note of that. Whenever we show the sequence, we get ideas and suggestions from people and we usually go back into the editing room and put it in. So, thank you.
Welcome. Other than that, I, I think it's a fine presentation. And when are you scheduling, when will this premiere?
So, you know, according to our projections right now, June or July, we should be complete with it. And when we get closer to the completion date and it's clear when, just when it's going to be done, we'll be setting up a premiere here at the TCA, at the Lenzik Theater in Santa Fe. And then, all of the local PBS stations are going to be broadcasting this a lot. They'll be using it, the DVD, as a gift for their fundraising pledges. So, we'll probably be, be broadcasting it and it'll get a lot of local play. Plus, the, the national exposure, I think, is really going to be important.
And as, as far as economic development for Taos, Taos County, you feel that by us sponsoring with $25,000, that it'll allow for that to happen?
I, I believe so. And if you were to compare what it would cost to purchase advertising for 415 broadcasts nationally, that's, it's a small number. We're just asking for help with our production. We have, you know, we're a for-profit, but we have a nonprofit fiscal agent and umbrella organization. So, we just want to get the project completed and get, get it out there. We think it'll help people and of course, we want to make, we do have plans for a second project, which is a dramatic narrative, five-part film for television, a limited series on the same subject. And we're in conversations with Sony Entertainment and we have a producer in Seattle who's coming out in April to talk about that next project. So, we're hoping that this project will open up the door and our commitment and intention is to continue to, to keep promoting this particular story, which we're so fond of.
And how will Taos County gain recognition for, I should say, the residents, the people of Taos County, for this contribution?
We have, we have three 15-second spots at the beginning and copied at the end, which say, "Major funds for this program were provided by the County of Taos," however you want us to word it. But we are going to say, "Visit Taos and, and New Mexico and live the adventure." And then, we'll have our website. We have a new website that will be linked with all the participating sponsors. If there's a website you want us to link to, there'll be a whole directory of sponsors and that way, we'll be helping give it, give back to the, the businesses and the agencies.
And Mr. Chairman, one final question. PBS, both at the New Mexico level as well as the national level, has committed to airing this?
The, New Mexico PBS is the second-largest uplink for syndication and distribution of videos. And we have a, a working agreement with them. Their executive producer is supervising this project and they're committed to, they already have established a, a distribution network and they're committed to going to each and every one of those stations.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Malone.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment that I don't know exactly what the lodgers tax board is going to decide, but there are important procurement and anti-donation considerations that have to be addressed. And the way that the lodgers tax allocation, the awards made by the board are handled is through advertising. And that is to say that the advertising is paid for by the organizations and then we reimburse for it. That advertising is a specific exception to procurement and is provided for by the lodgers tax. If it's not advertising, then we have to do this properly through procurement.
Can I, can I make a comment on that? So, one of the, Bob and I have had a couple of conversations on how to structure an agreement like this. And part of it would be the production costs involved in finishing the film. But the final part, you know, if we were to, to structure it into phases of completion, the final payment would, would not come until we have a committed schedule of broadcasting. So, the final aspect of this would be that we have, we have all of our broadcasting schedule in place, all of the, these following TV stations are participating. And that's, that is a way that we could structure it as an advertising media buy.
Again, Mr. Chairman, any part that is not advertising is going to have to comply with procurement.
In other words, there'd have to be almost like a particular invoice or line item that demonstrated to the lodgers tax board that the money actually went for promotion.
Okay.
So, I don't know if that's possible within your budget to parse it out in that way, but I think that's how it would have to work.
Well, I'm happy to talk with Mr. Malone about this and to structure it so it, it meets the criteria.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great film. I certainly was entertained by that, that portion of it. And no doubt in my mind that, you know, if you're successful in showing it to the numbers of people that you plan, that it would make a difference to Taos. It would, it would increase people's interest to come and visit. And I applaud you for your work. I, I would not change the actual language of the letter in the name of political correctness, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
So, anything else, Commissioners?
So, I've submitted the grant to Valerie Montoya. And if I need to meet with you to, to figure out how to re, to structure this, there, if there is a commitment that can't be fulfilled until the broad, the advertising takes place, we might be able to work out with the Economic Development District a loan in the meantime.
Are you working with the Town of Taos at all?
I have a proposal here, similar to this, that I'm submitting to Rick Bellis with their RFP as well. It would be really great in the, at the end credits if the county and the Town of Taos were, were shown to be behind this and supporting it. And we'd love to have your involvement.
Yeah, the town might have a easier structure to deal with, with Alida, possibly, that, that would make it easier for them to contribute money without the anti-donation issue. And if that were the case, if, if there was a majority on the board agreeing, then we could partner with the town. We can certainly give the town money towards that sort of thing without running into anti-donation issues. So, it's just another potential avenue for you to consider.
I'll discuss that with Rick. And the proposal I'm giving to them with minor changes is very, very similar to what we're submitting. So, it should be the same, on the same playing, playing board.
Well, we should best of luck. I look forward to seeing the whole production. I noticed that Mabel heard the Taos hum when she first came into the valley.
And every time I drive from Santa Fe to Taos at 70 miles an hour with air conditioning, I say, "Mabel, what do you think about this?" And a voice says, "It's too easy."
Right, 17 hours. That was, that was quite the journey back then.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Stephen.
Commissioners, everything else we have on the agenda is internal except for the sheriff and it, and I, and so, again, concerned that the pinasco issue is going to take some time. And if it's the board's pleasure to have the sheriff make his presentation, which I don't believe will be very long, then we could make one final amendment. If not, then we'll just proceed with pinasco.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda to bring Mr. Sheriff Holgriff up from the pinasco, in front of the pinasco discussion, so we can get back out there on the streets and protect our community.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have had the pinasco people waiting and the ambulance, the hospital people waiting. And I, I would just like to not move the agenda around again.
I think the sheriff's presentation will be much shorter than pinasco's and would like to see him be able to get back to his other duties. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, how long is the sheriff's presentation?
Sheriff?
Long as the commission wants it to be.
Any further discussion?
If I could just go ahead and vote, we'll vote on it right away. You've got it, Sheriff. Then I would agree. Take less than two minutes.
All right. Please call for the vote. Yes, I guess.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Up, watches. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone.
I apologize for that. You got 100 seconds.
All right. This is a carryover from February 3rd. An error was made in, on my behalf when I spoke with Mr. Archuleta about this. It is a contract for Forest Service overtime patrol for the sheriff's office to utilize. My mistake on it was that because it was under $20,000, I thought Mr. Archuleta could simply sign for that. However, the contract's made out for Commission Chairman, Mr. Blankenhorn, to approve or to sign this. So, I just wanted to present, hopefully you've had time to look at this. It is $10,000 for this year with a $1,165 carryover from last year's contract. Total contract is $11,165 to be utilized for overtime and mileage reimbursement for the sheriff's department's participation in patrols of the Camino Real Ranger District as well as campgrounds and also Questa Ranger District as well as campgrounds, to include fire prevention, protection of natural resources, wood poaching, and OHV enforcement.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you for your patience. All right, Commissioners, on to the item that we had previously moved up, which is, yeah, it was previously 14. Now, it is 9B, I guess. And this is a discussion, consideration, and decision regarding an offer to lease Holy Cross Hospital Pinasco Clinic property, Commissioner O'Donnell.
And also, we had moved up, since we moved things around, we moved up both those discussions, A and B.
Yeah, well, we, we wanted to.
All right, very good.
Wanted to do the lease discussion before we did the letter.
I would like to yield to our county manager or to the legal staff. This is basically just to begin a process of negotiation about a possible lease. And until we get a nod from Holy Cross or Taos Health Systems, it's rather premature to discuss what we will use that building for. We can use it for many, many things. So, with that in mind, I'd like to yield to Mr. Malone.
Mr. Chairman, it would be entirely appropriate for this commission to vote at this time, if it wanted to, to direct staff to engage in initial discussions. We're obviously premature. It's not time to draft a lease or anything like that. They either are interested or they're not interested. And, and from a legal perspective, it would be entirely appropriate to do what I just mentioned.
I thought one of your issues, Commissioner O'Donnell, was to keep the clinic open, so if we're leasing the building, doesn't that prohibit that?
I believe, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as indicated by THS, they are not going to keep that open, and there's no way they can. And one of the things in talking to Board President Ron Burnham yesterday is a possibility of continuing or including some kind of specialty services up there, like a dermatologist's visits, which that building, we could offer that to Holy Cross again. So, there, as you know, in the letter, WIC was coming to that building twice a month. That was something we could definitely keep up there, and so, there's other ways that we could work with the THS board to bring up some specialty services like dermatology, which Mr. Burnham indicated might be a possibility. But like I said, to say how or what we're going to use it for is a little premature, although I have plenty of things we can use it for. But we first just like to see if THS is willing. If they're willing, then we'll extend this conversation.
Mr. Chairman.
Steve.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I did have an opportunity to reach out to Cindy and ask if THS was considering leasing that building or selling that building, or what they were going to do. It's my understanding, I did not have any conversations with Ron Burnham, I guess Commissioner O'Donnell did, it was my understanding that they were looking at their options as far as whether they wanted to move that building close to Holy Cross Hospital, use that as office space here. Cindy is in the audience, and she could come up and speak on that behalf. From an administrative perspective, I mean, part of this is that we would have to have budget if we were going to lease that building for any significant amount or purchase that. And in order for us to do that, I think we would sort of have to look at this possibility as an enterprise fund in order to try to pay for that building. We do not have that in the general fund. I do have the Finance Director here that could talk about that. So, my only option would be to look at this as an enterprise fund that we could possibly rent to somebody in the future if Taos County is interested in the property slash the building and the purchase of that from THS.
Commissioner Romero.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. In the past, has Taos County ever contributed any monies towards the effort of this building, the construction of the building or even the parking areas? It seems to me like Taos County has participated somewhat financially in the past. I just can't remember specifically what it was. And what type of a building is it? Is it a modular?
That's correct.
And what is the value of it?
How many square feet? Idea? 25, 2700 square feet. It's a big building, 14 years old. It's worth quite a bit, then. $100,000, maybe? Maybe. No? Well, that's --
That is an issue that we should probably discuss under the next item.
I'm curious about the notice and the fact that the decision was made without it being an agenda item, so I also have some questions about that that we will address on the next item.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fambro.
I believe our clerk needs to know her name for the record.
Could you please state your name and --
Ardeno.
Did you get that? Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Sorry giving you that stink.
No.
Mr. Chairman, there are obviously two issues at hand. The county acquiring the building, which in my mind is secondary, primarily, I guess, I'm like Ms. Romano indicated, you know, mostly concerned about what's going to happen as far as medical needs for the residents of Penasco, and can we convince the board of the hospital not to do this, not to continue with the closure? That's where my main concern is, is making sure that residents of Penasco area are provided that medical attention that they so badly need in that area. I'm concerned that whoever made the decision, if it was the entire board or if it was just one individual, are they familiar with their constituents, their medical constituents in the Penasco area? Or is it just something where they decided, "We need to cut corners and we'll cut Penasco off because they're 13 miles away from Taos and let's just do it that way"? I guess that is a major concern for everybody. And then, secondary, what's, you know, if it does go through, what's going to happen to the building, I guess, would be a second concern. But primarily, my concern is just making sure that those medical needs are still met.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gallegos.
I would, I'd like to entertain the motion in regarding there being offered a lease the clinic with conditions that in the timeframe that we get to our new budget, we'll either have opportunity from maybe a different clinic or somebody else that would, so we're not having to bring this back up. We can give direction to our administration to, if there's somebody that's looking to find that as a home, then we start looking at those lease agreements or looking in discussion of a lease. Until then, you know, we don't want to get a lease, get into a lease agreement, and then have, it just be vacant, and then it looks like the county's not doing anything to occupy it with a medical group. So, I think it's, it would be positive to move forward, saying that we want to enter, looking to get in a lease contingency that there's somebody that wants to move in, and then we move forward thereafter and find out what's the lease agreements and all the dollar amounts is going to be thereafter, and we can put item B, and we can move into the meat and potatoes of what A is on the agenda. So, I don't --
I'll second that. That's fair enough.
With some discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Commissioner, now.
Obviously, I really feel, has the clinic closed already? Is it a done deal?
Oh, April 1st.
April 1st.
Yeah. Ms. Bradley, would you like to approach?
Mr. Commissioner Blankenhorn, Mr. Chairman, I really feel that we need to continue those discussions, perhaps in another meeting, a special meeting with the board from Holy Cross Hospital, the commission. Let's try to find a way of not having to do this. I would ask that you would reconsider the closure.
At the moment, we're going to continue that discussion, Commissioner Romero. I hear you loud and clear. But we have, right now, we have a motion to direct staff to consider potential for leasing or purchasing the building to be used for medical services in Penasco.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Fambro.
I haven't heard the owner of the building say it was even up for lease.
That's a good question. Cindy, could you --
Are we putting the cart for the horse, or the horse for the cart, or eating out of the cart, or what are we doing?
As part of our discussion, can you shed some light on whether or not this is a direction to staff that could bear some fruit?
No decision has been made about the land or the building. I think it will be very difficult to relocate the building, but we haven't explored that yet. Frankly, with its age, my concern is that if we attempt to move it, we may not have a building left after we move it. And so, I think the board would be open to a lease. I doubt that anyone's going to be rushing to lease the property, and so, I think that's something certainly that could be considered. If I could talk for a few minutes about the decision and those kinds of things.
I'll ask you just to hold that, those thoughts, for a moment until we vote on the motion and the second that's on the table.
And, Mr. Chairman, in relation to this, Commissioners, in talking to Ron Burnham, he said he would present it to the THS board. This does have to be a board decision, so, again, we're just putting this on the table and seeing what THS wants to do, and then at that point, I'll work very hard to see we can get a continuation of different medical services in that facility. And if that fails, we've got a possible sheriff's building.
Call my idea.
Well, you gave me that idea. I call for the vote.
Hold on a moment. Hold on, there's a discussion still on the table. It's, oh, THS also owns the real property?
My understanding, yes.
And how big of a lot is that?
I don't know.
Okay.
About an acre, I'm guessing.
I don't know.
It's not that big, about an acre.
Don't know, but I --
Sorry, what's the motion again?
So, my motion, Councilman Fambro, is that, Commissioner, sorry.
The other side of the --
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. I got lost there for a second, I'm sorry. So, motion is made by myself to offer into a lease with Holy Cross Hospital Penasco Property Clinic with conditions that, you know, we, once we find or if there's a home for some medical group to enter, or if we have some idea, if there's, for financially sound to lease it or purchase it, which we'll find out probably here in the next budget, then we make that, we start making those steps forward for that. Other than that, Ms. Commissioner O'Donnell, seconding.
Yep, we do have a motion, and we do have a second. We're still in the discussion stage. Steve, is staff clear the directions of the motion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, staff is clear with the directions of the motion. My concern is, and again, I'd want to, at some point, have some discussion of the budgetary issue, and we don't even know what that would be. If it's a $1 a year lease from Holy Cross Hospital, that's a big difference than a $300,000 purchase, so I don't know what that is, and so, that's difficult for staff to make recommendations based on that. Our Finance Director is here. I don't think that he would, as I don't, have an idea of where that money would come from, but we could make some recommendations to the commission as we move forward.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would still like for the THS board to somehow, in nicest of conditions, still reconsider the closure.
I second that.
And that would solve a lot of everything else that we're talking about.
We can't have another motion.
I know, but that's my opinion.
Hold on. You'll get to voice your opinion when we get to that item. So, of course, County Manager brings up a good point. Equally difficult point will be actually finding the service that would occupy the building. That is, that would be a very high hurdle, but we do have a motion and a second on the table. Are there any other?
Mr. Chairman, and I just want to say that by the board making this decision to close leaves a huge black eye on those who represent in your board. And keep in mind the people who need the help, the reason why you're in Taos, serving on that board of the hospital.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, then we'll call for the vote. Please.
Mr. Chairman?
No.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
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 All right, now, on to the issues that we've been so anxious to discuss. This actually is a discussion regarding a letter concerning the Taos Health Systems closure, and I think Commissioner O'Donnell is the author, and so, I will turn the, turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is a rather benign letter. It's just to inform everyone of what has happened, and I'm going to read it into the record if I may. May I, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, please.
This letter is to notify you of a serious concern regarding the hastily closed Penasco Health Clinic managed by Quorum effective, actually, it's March 31st. Taos County was never told beforehand of this decision. The decision to close by Taos Health Systems, THS, doing business as Holy Cross Hospital in a February 25th decision was not placed on the THS agenda. The closure was brought up unobtrusively in the interim CEO's report. We are concerned about the disruption of primary care services to the 1,100 clients served by the clinic. Taos County currently has a lease with THS. THS says they are writing a letter to notify patients, but we question whether a notice of less than three weeks is sufficient. With this in mind, we will be asking THS for an extension of the closure, or in the very least, a notification to the county on how to best assist in the transition. On March 6th, the Commissioner for the area, Candace O'Donnell, talked to the elderly at the Chamisol Senior Center and was told by some patients that they are concerned about a disruption in getting medications as both the doctor and physician assistant, and I realize that maybe need to be correct, Cindy, are no longer at the Penasco Clinic. The doctor resigned in January, and the PA has been transferred to Taos. Commissioner O'Donnell has received a complaint from a constituent who went for two weeks without blood pressure, gout, and pain medication because he did not know where to go after being told no one was available at the clinic to give him a prescription. In addition, both the ambulance and sheriff departments have expressed concerns about the closure, fearing it will place more demand for services from their departments. The county has been told that there are no closure protocols for federal and state-certified RHCs. Our concerns are focused on assuring continuity of care and the transition of patients to another source of care, especially since the Penasco area has a high demographic of elderly residents. Holy Cross has been invited to a town hall meeting March 28th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. in Penasco. The county commission has expressed an interest in leasing the former Penasco Health Clinic building to continue to provide services like WIC. THS had an arrangement with the Department of Health to visit twice a month for WIC clients. As you are aware, Taos County has statutory authority to provide health care under the Hospital Funding Act, Chapter 4, Article 48B-5, NMSA 1978. Item G of 4-48B-5, Power of County States, to lease a hospital to any person, corporation, or association for the operation and maintenance of the hospital upon terms and conditions as the county commissioners may determine. In closing, we are aware of numerous best practices for facility closures and urge you to work with the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS, to encourage the adoption of patient-centered closure rules for rural health clinics. Because RHCs are specifically designed to serve the Medicare population in health professional shortage areas, special efforts are needed to assure continuity of care for elderly and disabled patients in areas with well-documented, limited availability of health resources. These rules should at a minimum require 90-day written notification to patients, instructions for how to retrieve and/or transfer medical records, and prescription medications, and assistance with identifying and acceptance into another medical practice. Thank you for your attention to this traumatic loss. Thank you for your attention to this traumatic loss. And I just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in talking to Mr. Burnham, he would take back to the THS Board if they would be willing to keep the clinic open specifically to put a community health worker in there, to make sure every single patient knows where to go, what to do, who to pick. And, and I am suggesting that because, as far as my understanding, this is the best we can do. And if we could get an agreement from THS to extend the closure, not including a provider up there, but to have it open for a community health worker like Anselma Vasquez, to call these patients, to make sure everyone's been notified, to help them fill out the forms, to give them the proper dates for their medical records requests. This is the kind of thing, this is the very least we can ask for now, given we've, I've talked to Cindy, there's no way they're gonna keep it open. And so with that in mind, we're just asking that our congressional delegation, our state representative, our state senator, all the people are aware of this and possible future federal legislation that would prevent such a short notice, which is actually more like two weeks' notice, 'cause I was, received the letter. But it's, it's for that, and to ask for an extension on the closure based on making sure that these patients have continuity of care and they know what to do. And if there's anything you'd like to rework in the letter, Commissioners, I'm, I have no problem with that. If there's any words you'd like to change, I have no problem. But the gist is to take it back to the THS Board to see if they would be willing for an extension. I asked for at least 30 days from Ron, to help these patients move through this crisis. And then, just to let our legislative bodies know that we'd like to see some kind of legislation to prevent this, this type of closure from happening, as far as the timeliness of it and the length of time that patients were notified. I received my letter, because I was a patient there on Saturday, and I was, I confirmed with someone else, they got their letter on Saturday. So, this is about a, a two-week notice, and I just am concerned about continuity of care. So I do respectfully ask that we send this letter off, and willing for any changes you might wanna make.
And the proposal would be that THS would pay somebody to stay at the clinic for a 30-day period and direct them to other services?
Help them fill out medical forms, help them fill out the medical release forms, like I was given a medical release form. I don't remember when I started at the clinic, you know? I need to find out what dates I want my medical records from, what date, and I'm sure these other people need that too. They need, if I need assistance, I know other people need some help. And whether, you know, we would just like to, even if it's two or three days a week, Ms. Bradley, that someone's there to let the elderly come in, so they're not trying to deal with this over the phone. We just think it's, it's the least that, that THS could do, given that.
Oh, hold on a moment, please. And, and you had that discussion with the Board President, Mr. Burnham?
Yes, I did.
And he indicated to you that he would bring that proposal to the THS Board at their next meeting?
Yes, he made no promises, but he said he would bring it to the Board.
I think it's a, a great suggestion, and, and I'm pleased that the THS President, Board President, is willing to consider it at a future meeting. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's see, so I guess before, before Cindy, Ms. Gonzalez, would you approach and?
You know, I've been talking to people in that area, and they've been saying that they're trying to change, and they're backed out up to three weeks and more.
At El Centro?
Well, no, El Centro, and they're calling Taos, they're calling Espanola, I mean Dixon, and they're telling them, I think he was telling me that you may, right?
Please, approach, and could you come up and state your name and?
Clyde Gurule. Excuse me. I go to that clinic, my wife and some of my family members, and there is some, now to find a, a family practice, maybe in Taos, some of these family practice, what I've been hearing, they have waiting lists. Can't just walk in there and, and I wanna change my records here. So, with that situation, how can we go and change our records in two weeks and stuff like that? Along with that line, like, I'm a person, me and my wife, that we have like four, our, four of our parents are 80-plus. And we're on the road every week, taking them to appointments and stuff like that. And you don't understand, or people don't understand what it is when a clinic is right there and you go just down the road and take them, especially an elderly, roommate, toy, and who knows what conditions they have. Sometimes the road is hard for them, to, to go out there and all the waiting and all this stuff. We need to consider that a lot of these elderly, or, or there's homebound, there's, there's patients there in, in wheelchairs. You know, the trip to, to take him, and I don't know the decisions, the decisions that were mentioned in the newspaper was financially a hundred and some thousand in the red. The letter that we got, it states that they can find a doctor to go to that, to serve that clinic. Now, where is this coming from? I don't know, I don't understand. The people need to know. Now, this meeting that's gonna take, in Penasco, that, this meeting that, questions about the closing of the clinic and all that stuff, but guess what? It's the 28th. The clinic is closing when? The end of the month, right? So, so the people don't, I know it's a financial or whatever it is, but it's just the people have no voice in it. And the people are the ones that are hurting. If you wanna help people, and really help people, here is something that you can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley?
The decision to close the clinic was both financial, and it was also an issue concerning our ability to recruit and retain physicians, nurse practitioners, and mid-levels. And it's not something that's unique to Taos County, it's a problem across the country. There's a growing, huge deficiency of primary care physicians. It's not the same thing, but I'm from Norman, Oklahoma, and I could not find a primary care physician in Norman, and I have to drive 25 miles into Oklahoma City to see a physician every two weeks. And, and I can go back to all of the other interims I've done, and they're having the same problems. The problem here in Taos is exacerbated, because Dr. Killer has just announced that he's leaving primary care. And so, our, our primary care resources are dwindling here in Taos County. And so it's not just Penasco, it's, it's everywhere. We're having this problem, trying to find providers. And it's just a very difficult problem. Financially, I gave each of you prior to the meeting, a three-year financial. And if you add up the totals for 2012, 2013, and 2014, it's about a loss of $267,000. But if you look at the footnotes down below, it does not include employee benefits, and that usually runs about 20% of salary, so that's an additional almost $200,000. And it does not include the billing expenses, which are listed in the footnote as PBS. And billing expenses usually run about 8% of net revenue, and so that's another $83,000. So for the last three years, we've lost, and, and so that does not include any overhead from the hospital, from Taos Professional Services, those are the direct costs. And with expenses, and with the billing services added on to it, we're somewhere close to $550,000 loss. And as I spoke earlier, the hospital cannot continue to sustain those losses. And we will continue to have to look at the services that we provide. We cannot be all things to all people. We have to look at what are the services that are primary. And primary care in Penasco, I know is important. And I, and I, I take my mother to the doctor's appointments, and I, I understand that, and I'm very, very sorry. But it's coming down to the survival of the hospital, and what are we gonna, the decisions that we have to make to ensure that the hospital is here. And I think part of the, the discussion or thought process for the Board was that El Centro is there in Penasco, and it is another option. And I have talked to Laura Peace, who is the CEO there, and she is willing to have people at this meeting, and she has stated in the paper that they can take additional patients and are anxious and willing to do that. I know that the federally qualified health centers are facing some cuts in reimbursement, but I think they're here to stay. I, I, I won't speak for her, and she can speak at that public meeting in terms of the long-term view for El Centro. But I, I think that they will continue to operate that clinic.
Mr. Chairman.
If I could talk for a couple of minutes, I think there's been a lot of confusion. So, we intended to get those notices out on March 2nd, but they had to go to the printer, and it took a while, and so we did not mail them until the 9th. I don't know why you didn't get yours until the 14th or 15th. And so I would be glad to have a person in the office for another 15 days until April 15th, and then that would be a month that people would have an opportunity to come in. We have had someone staffed five days a week there through all of this, and we've had a provider there three days a week, and that will continue until April 1st. And, and I will commit to having someone in the office to help with these arrangements and so forth for another 15 days, and that would be a full 30-days' notice. I, I'll take it back to the Board, Ron knows these concerns, but I just don't think it's something that the hospital will be able to go back and, and continue the service.
I appreciate you agreeing to advocate on behalf of an extra 15 days of at least some administration help there, to help people. But let me just say, you know, all of us want the hospital to provide more services, and, and we're asking them to do as, as many things for our constituents as we can, but we are all, at some point, you know, gonna have to consider a request from the hospital, you know? I mean, we can say, yes, do more, yes, do more, yes, do more, but the numbers are what they are. And, you know, I know, so, you know, the, the public may end up having to consider a, a vote for providing more finances if, in fact, we want additional services. I'm, I'm still hopeful that, you know, with the new safety net pool formula, and changes that Cindy has made, and that the Board is making, and the new CEO will make, and hopefully Quorum can be some help in advising how the hospital can be viable in the future. But, you know, it's easy to say we want more, but, but we do have to face the numbers. And I'm still hopeful that the hospital will be able to continue to, to provide the, the services that they do. But it's, it's just a, a point of reality that, that we're all gonna have to face.
And Mr. Chairman, where are the financial losses coming from? Is it the lack of patients that are coming to Holy Cross?
It's decreases in reimbursement across the Board. And we are, we are just struggling every day, it, more and more cuts. I'm, I'm making a request to, to come to the next county commission meeting, and we want to share with you a PowerPoint that demonstrates what cuts we have suffered, and what cuts are anticipated over the next three years, and they are substantial. So.
So, is your Board at any point considering possibly leaving the Taos community, and having someone else come in as a replacement? Or you're hoping to stay?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I do appreciate the 15-day, but I would appreciate it even more if you went back to the Board and give us another 30, because a lot of times, it's a 90-day. Those who are federally regulated have 90-days. So I think if we're, we're just asking for another 30-days beyond your March 31st, rather than the 15. So I would appreciate if you could take that back, and appreciate you offering the 15-days as well.
If I might offer a suggestion about your letter, and so I, I was listening, and you talked about QHR's Rural Health Clinic. It is not QHR's Rural Health Clinic, it is Taos Health Systems. QHR makes recommendations to the Board, but it makes absolutely no policy decisions. All of the decisions, including the decision to close the Penasco Clinic, are made by the Board of Directors, who have the fiduciary responsibility to make those decisions. And QHR does not make those decisions.
QHR, of course, being Quorum, and they're under a contract for consultation, not, not management of the hospital.
All right, I have no problem with that change, Mr. Chairman.
Cindy, is there anything else that you'd like to share with us?
I'd be glad to try to answer more questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for attending and, and sitting with us all morning here. Commissioners, we have a letter on the table. What is the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this letter to send to the various people.
Mr. Chairman, there was that, the correction that Cindy suggested?
With the correction of, from Quorum to THS, and the, the date of effective March 31st.
I'll go ahead and second at that point, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion, Commissioners? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Fambro.
Before Mr. Thilke doesn't talk to me for another 30-days, the reason I voted no on the previous motions, 'cause I, I wish there was something we could do to keep it open. And rather than this, Lisa, I wish it would stay the clinic, and that's my protest vote. So, please, Neil, talk to me again.
And it is admittedly a big hurdle, but I do admire, I admire the persistence and the work that Commissioner O'Donnell has done on this issue, which so affects her constituents, including Mr. Thilke. Especially Mr. Thilke. Commissioners, it's 10 after 12. What's your pleasure?
We have a public hearing that requires us to be back at 1?
We don't.
Okay, then we can take a whole hour.
We're wide open. Is that in the form of a motion?
Sure. I'll go ahead and second, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to go back into session?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item 9B, I believe, is where we are on the agenda, and this is a discussion regarding the approval of a contract between Taos County and Wayne Rutherford for work to be done at Amalia. Anita.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone, and so on and so forth. You have before you a contract between Taos County and Wayne Rutherford, general contractor, to start working on the Amalia Community Center. We invited five contractors to supply quotes. Of the five contractors, two actually went to the site visit, and of the two, Wayne Rutherford gave us the best quote. There you have it in a nutshell.
That was, that was good, I like that. Thank you, Anita. The scope of work, I, what are we doing, what's Mr. Rutherford gonna do here? Oh, I see, mhm.
Chairman, Commissioners, there should be scope of works in your package, but a summary of it is, basically, they're gonna do rust remediation on some miscellaneous purlings that got rust. that got rust while the building was in storage. Going to replace prob, well, not replace, install probably 50% of the bolts in the structure that are still missing. And also, make corrections along the sill plate to make it watertight and vermin-tight.
And are we still planning to do some work in-house?
We're planning on it. I don't know how that's gonna come along right now with my schedule. I, I would like to. I think that's what it's gonna take for us to complete it, but.
How much we have left after the 43?
$1,019.
No. We got, how much, I'm sorry, how much money do we have left?
$1,019. Well.
Oh, wait. No. No. We, of the 50,000, of the 50,000 that the Commission gave for this project, we have $1,100 left.
But we're still gonna sell bonds and?
Correct. Those bonds have been sold. I'm just waiting for the grant agreement.
Okay.
So, that's $150,000.
Right. We still have $150,000 after we spend this 43.
Yes.
And we need to make it work to finish the building. What's the plan?
We have already purchased all the framing package for the interior framing. We have the steel package for the fire, two-hour fire separation. We have doors and door hardware in place. There's enough sheet work to do about 50% of the bathroom. So, once, once we get that money, there, we're gonna take a couple different avenues. We're gonna try, we can get quotes from CES vendors or state contractors, or we can put it out to bid. I think we probably make our money go a little bit further if we get quotes and work with our local contractors that we can use. Stuff under $20,000, under $60,000 doesn't require Bacon Davis. Under $20,000 doesn't require bonding, under $25,000. So, we're gonna try and use just about every avenue we can to get the most bang for our buck. We still have some more materials to purchase. And the big thing really is gonna be the mechanical, heating and cooling. On a building that size, probably would be somewhere in the vicinity of about $50,000. We are gonna salvage two-unit heaters from, one from Yanocamado, one from the old courthouse, and rese, and repurpose those. But basically, it's, the only, the only inspection they got was the underslab inspection for the plumbing. And we need top-out, trim-out, everything. We do have plumbing fixtures, though, that were left by the.
But we're no longer considering sending you up there for a month or two?
I would love to, but my plate is, is rapidly becoming full with the Ag Center, the courthouse, other duties that, that's the manager, and the Commission has requested me to take care of, so. But I would love to, I mean, it doesn't bother me. I enjoy doing it. And I really think we're gonna have to do some of it to really, to complete it.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna work with local contractors that have CES or state contracts, as many as we can. Also, we can use other contractors that are in there, because by using CES or state contract, we can actually negotiate right where we're going, change scopes of work, say, we're gonna do this, we'll supply this material, you do that. Like I said, Ms. Anita and I have been, we're, we're slowly learning how to get the most bang for our buck, and, and that's what we're gonna try and do.
A good plan. I was just curious about the timeline, I guess, after this $43,000 that we expend. How quickly are we gonna be able to put the $150 to work?
Depends on when we get the grant agreement.
It's, yeah. It's more about the money. Getting contractors involved in scopes of work, I have multiple scopes of work broken out and different things, so.
Okay.
We just need to have the money so that we can spend it correctly.
So, how are you gonna break out the interior of the building? What?
I'm sorry, what was that, Commissioner?
Are you gonna break out the interior of the building? I know it. Splitting up the building so that it would be?
Well, it wasn't so much splitting, well, yeah, it is, to make it more cost-effective. The cost savings would be, excuse me, because the occupancy of the building is A3 assembly. Anytime you get over occupancy of 300 people or more, you have to have a sprinkler system. To have sprinklers, you need to have a 10-minute sprinkle. That's gonna require about a 40,000-gallon water tank, pumps, and a generator to generate the pumps if the power goes off. So, that's about $100,000, $125,000 proposition. I've spoken to CID, I've spoken to the State Fire Marshal, and they're willing to allow us to do a two-hour fire separation to keep the assembly area, the meeting area, under the 300 occupancy, which would allow us, which, then we wouldn't have to sprinkler it. So, that's how we're gonna do it on the, that would be the east side of the building. It'll be a large room, but it'll be right at 2,100 square feet, so that will be under the 300 occupancy. There's bathrooms already framed in place. Kitchen is to the north side. It's roughed in, the plumbing. There's some offices, and then a library that are just, that won't be framed. They'll just have the perimeter framing and sheet rock in place, and a drop ceiling throughout the whole facility. And at one time, I believe that year that we went, it was in the wintertime, weren't there some issues with the foundation as well? To where the, the doors, the door frames were actually below, way below the porch level? Not, not on that building. That building, that building is good. The found, the foundation problems that we do have are, the concrete for the slab was poured three inches shy all the way around. It was poured incorrectly. So, we don't have the correct seal with the wall sheeting, and so, we're getting water infiltration and. So, how, is that gonna be corrected through this? That's gonna be in this first batch of money. We're putting up gutters on the east, on the west side, flashings. We talked to the building manufacturer. They suggested the remedy for the inside structural part. And so, that's, that's where this first $48,000, $42,000 tax. Mr. Chairman, Manager Archuleta is with all the other buildings. I, I'd like to see some sort of a timeline.
Okay.
Because we've been talking about this building for three years now. And I understand that you have to cross all of the paperwork and, you know, make sure it's all done and stuff. It, it would be nice to. We can, I can build you a timeline without any hard dates, just with timeframes, three weeks for that, two weeks for this. Because until we have the funding in place and contracts, there's, there's no set date. But I can give you, I can give you schedules with, framing should take this long, electrical should take this long, plumbing should take this long. And then, get contracts and whatnot, then we can fill in the dates.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if possible, I'd, I'd just like to sort of react to that and, or, or make a statement. Part of the problem with that has been that our audit was an issue. And so, if we wanted to take out that money out of general fund and pay somebody else to manage our money during that timeframe, we decided to hold off on that, not sell the bonds, until now, that we got back with a clear audit. And so, I'm well aware of, of the timeframe, but part of that was not staff's issue. It was just something that happened because of us taking on housing and the issues out there. So, now, we, we're well aware of DFA's backlog. We were trying to be proactive on all of those issues. But we just got our audit back in November. Anita has been, been working really diligently with DFA to move, move all of these projects forward and any federal, state funding that we have on that. So, that, that was really the delay on that, is that we had to wait a whole year, clear up that audit, so that we could manage our own money and move forward. Because if not, we'd have to be paying 2% for somebody else to manage that money for us to move these projects forward.
Well, this is a good step here, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do you anticipate any change orders on this contract?
On, on this particular contract? No, sir. We, very explicit with the scope of work. We made sure they walked through the whole place and saw, and that's one thing that we're trying to be real tight.
If there is on this contract, will that be brought back to us?
Right now, there is, I think, a resolution that all change orders on projects have to be brought back, at least to be notified, the Commission.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna thank you for, for your honesty and knowing that you have a full plate, as opposed to saying, I can do it. And then, you know, it's September, October, November, and you're saying, Mark, I'm ready to go up there.
Yeah.
You know, I, I really appreciate that, because it, it's gonna be enlightening for those, those up in Amalia to see some action going on. And as long as they see some progressive action, they'll probably be quietly waiting for it to be completed. So, you know, I do appreciate that, that you took this other step, as opposed to putting it on, on, on your plate and then not being able to complete it, so.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve the contract. What's the number? Contract between Taos County and Wayne Rutherford, General Contractor, for the work to be done at Amalia Community Center, for the amount of $43,052 exclusive of GRT.
Second.
With a 60-day. Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Real Property Transfer Agreement for Los Corovas. Anita.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, finally, we've gotten to the step that we've tried so hard to get to, the transfer of various community centers into our arms. Because we've spent a lot of money on a couple of the community centers, and it's only right that Taos County gets to, to say, yes, this is our community center. So, the first one you have before you is the transfer agreement for Los Corovas. At this point in time, that is only a multipurpose court. But I believe future vision is to have a small building erected there for a community center. After this step, as with the rest of them, I will have to put myself on the agenda for the school board. After it goes to the school board, the Public Education Department has to approve it. Then I have to take it to the State Board of Finance to approve it. So, we're still about four or five months out to actually having these recorded.
This is great. This is really wonderful that we're, we're getting this done. And pleased to see it on, on these three sites. I know El Prado's problematic because of the reversion. But is there anything we can do to get El Prado?
Mr. Chairman, there, there are some things that can be done to get, to get El Prado. One of them, I believe, the cloudiness of the title is what is on everybody's mind. We would have to do a quiet title suit. And I don't know that Taos County wants to undertake that, that financial burden. There was a, a building that was constructed next to the El Prado communities, or the school site, that is encroaching upon the survey. The individual had made some sort of an obligation to the school to have that surveyed out of their cert, out of that particular tract, and he never did it. So, we're just stuck with a lot of title issues.
Bob, is a quiet title the only option?
I haven't looked at this recently, but when I last looked at it many months ago, I came to the conclusion that either deeds from the heirs, and initially, the folks in El Prado were trying to round that up, and it turned out to be too much of a problem, or a quiet title.
And a quiet title would cost, I'm sorry, I apologize, Commission, for, for getting off-agenda here, but if I can just get this, I'll quit after this question. About five grand, maybe?
I honestly don't know the answer off the top of my head, but we would need a survey. We might need some title research that a title company would have to do. And it, the property is not so large that a survey would be that expensive. So, $5,000, but don't hold me to that number.
You're looking at about $6,000 easily.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to the property in Los Corovas, we do have the community center, which is privately owned by the Martinez family, and then this court, which is right of the community center, correct?
Correct.
And how much property does it consist of?
Um, I believe it. Yeah, it's almost an acre.
And so, it, it is a good size of property for a community center, a new community center if it was to be developed?
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Romano, one thing that we really like on this is it's, it's not on a curve. It's got a really good, clear sight. There's adequate around what it is. If you envision the multipurpose court as the building, you'll see the, you can picture all the parking around it and everything. And it's pretty solid ground all around there, so it's, it's.
Not a high-water table like the other one.
Yeah.
And so, that one has been surveyed?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, all three sites that we're discussing today have been surveyed.
Oh, you would probably need just a property improvement, location type of survey, then, if you were to do a quiet title suit?
This one, I don't believe we need a quiet title suit. We are talking about the El Prado Community Center. This one does not have title issues.
It's owned by the schools, you said?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Onto the next one, which is Arroyo Hondo.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, apparently, in 2008, when the Arroyo Seco Community Center was transferred to Taos County, there, I discovered paperwork for Arroyo Hondo and the Taupa Community Center that had the same paperwork. It was signed by both the Commission, the, the Commission at the time, and the school board. For some reason, the paperwork was never, it just stayed on somebody's desk. So, this is just a formality, I, I think, in just resigning everything that was agreed to previously.
So, you won't have to go through the same steps with the school board and the DFA?
Yes, I'm gonna have to, but I'm gonna show them that they've signed it once, so.
Okay. All right. Well, good. I appreciate it. Commissioners?
Move for approval?
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, are there water rights? I see there's reference to these contracts that say, and, and any water rights. Are there water rights?
Yeah. Mr. Malone?
That was just language put in there in case there are water rights. We've not researched whether there are.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I would imagine, Mr. Chairman, that the property in Los Corovas does have surface water rights.
Commissioners, we have a motion to approve this.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Yes.
That was already done.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Well, thank you, Anita. Those are big steps. Now, we have the GO bond, or is that like a Geo bond, GO bond for the Taupa Community Center Library?
It, um, I believe you missed the transfer agreement for the Taupa Community Center.
Oh, I missed Taupa.
We voted twice on Arroyo Hondo, just to make sure.
Okay. I gotta quit looking at my phone and concentrate here.
I thought it was maybe that tortilla burger with that extra.
Maybe that was it, too.
Extra tomatoes.
Onto the Taupa, onto the Taupa Community Center deed. E. Anita.
Ditto to the one before.
We've invested, Mr. Chairman, how much?
At last count, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, the Taupa Community Center has received close to half a million dollars for improvements to the building. So, this one is, is actually one of the ones that I hold dear to my heart, because they're a great community center. They offer a lot of community services. They have a li, a library. And so, this is actually, you know, one of my favorites.
It is truly one of my favorites as well. It's, it's a true example of a community center, of what a community center should be able to, to do for its neighborhood. And I applaud the residents of the Taupa area for doing such. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next time I do something really stupid, just stop me, okay?
Stop.
F. This is approval of the GO bond for the Taupa Community Center. Anita.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Taupa Community Center Library receives money every year through the state library. This year, they are receiving $7,723.77. They use these monies to purchase additional computers, books, library shelving. They, they do put it to a lot, a lot of good use for the community.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Real fast.
Yes.
It's me talking.
Oh, please.
Please sign this in blue.
Okay.
If you don't, they, I'll, I'll hunt you down.
I've got my blue pen.
It's written.
Yes. Okay. I won't change my pen, I promise.
Okay. Now you can proceed.
All right.
Dark blue, light blue.
Item 10A, this is a discussion consideration decision for approval of Resolution 2015-15, which would approve an application for a non-federal land funding to encumber the Secure Rural Schools Title III funding allocated to the county for this grant, and enabling the county to serve as a fiscal agent and provide in-kind supportive staff and services relating to the application.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm happy to say that our last NFL grant was successively closed on time, and we spent all but $124. You now have several fuel breaks in the Taos Canyon area. And I believe Mark Schutz presented the findings from that, from that very important project that we finished. So this is another project that we are applying for, and this one will actually be in the Pot Creek area.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
All right, this is B now, 10B, and it's a discussion regarding the approval of Resolution 2015-16, authorizing the county to submit an application to the Department of Finance, Local Government Division, to participate in the juvenile adjudication program. And you don't look like Herbert, but welcome Johnny Riddelo.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair, County Manager Ms. Archuleta, and County Attorney Mr. Malone. Herbert Valdez got sick yesterday, so he left and he asked me, requested me to come today and present this in front of you. I'm here today for the consideration and decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2015-16. This resolution authorizes the county to submit an application to the Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division, which will allow Taos County DWI program to continue to participate in the juvenile adjudication program, which is called Teen Court. Teen Court involves all juveniles with minor offenses to go through this program. Minor offenses being truant, absent from school. They also do shoplifting. So they first go to JPO, and then JPO filters them off to us, the cases that are allowed to be given to us. Taos has been doing this for 17 years. Piñasco has been on board for three years. And Cuesa has just got on board with us now. Due to the increase of the caseloads now, Darlene Trujillo, who facilitates this program, needs assistance with this caseload. And so we are asking for $15,000, the county to in-kind match of $1,500, for a total of $16,500. And that's what our program is requesting today.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Mr. Fanbro.
Do you have the match?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, we do. The Finance Director isn't here, but yes. We make sure we go through those steps prior. Oh, there he is, I didn't see him back there. We did, we're good.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there any other further questions? Mr. Chairman, may I be excused?
Yes, you may, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onto item C, this is a discussion regarding the approval of Resolution 2015-18, authorizing disposal of personal property. Ms. Ortega.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission. I am here today with Resolution 2015-18, a resolution authorizing disposal of personal property through public auction. Attached is the list of all vehicles that we intend to put up for auction. Once we get approval today, we need to send this to the state auditors. That will take about 30 days. And from there, we can go live with the auction.
Sounds good. Commissioners?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, for a while there, I thought we were changing the style of our doors.
Got the wrong names of the Commissioners up there, but that's a beautiful sign.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Flotis will, during his presentation, talk about the sign.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Ortega. Item number 11A, Department Matters. This is a request, an approval of a new position to be considered for the Facilities Management Department, Mark Flores, Facilities Manager Director, and Rene Weber, Human Resources Director. Good morning, good afternoon.
Chairman, yes, sir. Commissioners, County Manager, Attorney, good morning, good afternoon. Excuse, pardon me for the interruption here. I wanted to present this sign that we've been working on to restore. It's the Felimón Sánchez Park sign, one of two. I don't exactly know the age of it. It was a team effort. The artist, though, of the department is Gilberto Jaramillo, who's sitting in the back with me. He was, he's pretty much the primary one that did the painting on it. But everybody pitched in and touched on it in various aspects, in regards to collectively picking out paint. And we changed up some colors of the paint. My staff member Manny V. Hill put the red on the Zia symbol. It was originally all yellow. So we put a little bit of character in it. So we wanted to present that to you guys and hope you like it. And you'll be seeing it when you play softball.
Beautiful. I couldn't remember that we started playing ball there in '82, huh? Sounds about right, I guess.
So, yeah, so this is the first time, I think, it's been touched since then. We got one more to do.
Yeah.
So we'll be moving along.
I don't know why I looked at Jim, he was probably in high school then, but...
No. I was 11.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a quick story on that. Mr. Trujillo, George C. Trujillo, who's been really sick lately, reached out to me and had asked that we actually redo the sign of the original Commissioners that had dedicated the Felimón Sánchez Park. And so I had asked Mark if him and his crew could get together and do this. And so we took a picture of it. Now we'll take it back to Mr. Trujillo to let him know that that's been done. So even though your standards, Commissioners, run out, you can still have requests into the Managers as life goes on. And, you know, we can do nice things for previous Commissioners like that.
It's a great idea, I look forward to seeing it out there.
Yeah, and just, you know, on the last remarks, I want to thank my staff. They're the ones that went and took it down and did all the work, you know. You know, from our manager to me, to them, and, you know, they're the ones that got their hands dirty. I appreciate it very much. So, and then we have one more sign over there where we got all the Commissioners' names, the new Commissioners. You guys, we got your names up there now, we got the old signs removed. We're gonna temporarily remove that sign, though, so we could refinish the wood on it. So we're gonna...
Good job, guys. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The person that spearheaded the idea behind that was Mr. Phil Lucero. And I remember he worked unbelievable amount of time coming back and forth to the county to get that done. And Phil was, I mean, he never gave up.
Excuse me.
Great job.
Okay, cool. So I'm here to request from you guys an approval for a new position. The Facilities Management Department is a, is a pretty big department in the aspect of what we oversee, but staff-wise, we're kind of small. A lot of responsibility is solely placed on me. I receive pretty much all requests and concerns. I manage all my staff's time, get all our quotations and related paperwork, requisitions, purchase orders, contracts, contract requests, data. I do a lot, all our data input, scheduling, or what I can do in regards to scheduling, work order follow-ups, staff's requests and needs. Pretty much all comes down to me. And it's with, you know, great respect that I ask approval for clerk. And I have a little bit of a spill here, if you bear with me, and I'm gonna read through it on some notes I have. It is my intention to utilize the position to increase our efficiency and better our office practices and customer service. In approving this position, Taos County will not only be hiring a clerk, but in doing so, the position will allow me more time to get out into the field, to perform work, do inspections, site visits, and supervise my staff. This person will be the point of contact for work orders, requests, and concerns while I'm in and out of the office. I plan to create a central work order request email account with our IT department that my administrative assistant and myself would have access to. This person will work with me to create schedules for all staff and will be responsible for ensuring that schedules are followed and tasks are completed. Kind of reiterating what I stated earlier, this position will assist me with tasks that I currently am solely responsible for, such as staff's leave and time quotes and related paperwork, requisitions, purchase orders, contracts, contract requests, data input, scheduling, work order follow-ups, staff's requests and concerns. She will, he will help me plan projects and will assist staff with acquiring what they need, as well as process invoices for payment and keep record of all activities within the department. Currently, to be real honest with you, a lot of pressure and stress is on my shoulders due to the fact that I take my job very seriously. When I leave the office every day, there's always things on my mind that I know I didn't get to or I need to get to, things that needed to be done last week, yesterday, today. And this person will assist me with making sure that those things get done. I also have trouble taking days off of work because when I'm not around, you know, I'm currently the central point of contact within the department. All requests usually come through me, even on a day off. My phone's ringing off the hook daily, and I do answer my phone as much as possible. I never really get a day off, I'm not complaining. I'm very happy to be involved and make sure that things get completed. But this person will be the central point of contact, and everything will go through them. This position isn't just needed for me. The position will benefit my staff tremendously and Taos County as a whole. Currently, my department employs 14 positions, and we do not have any administrative assistants at the time. I do work very closely with Finance, Human Resources, and everybody works as a team, and they all assist me, and I'm very thankful for that. But we do not have an administrative assistant. And I feel that if you look around the county, everybody has one or two or more, and I'm just asking for one. We oversee 20 buildings and grounds, as well as one 10-acre park. The lack of an internal administrative assistant, I feel, is detrimental to my department. It kind of holds my employees back and myself and affects the county. The addition of this department, the addition of this position to the department will only help skyrocket us to where we need to be. It's my request that I get your approval for this, and I stand for questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is it within our budget, Mr. Corolla, Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there was a position that we had put into this year's budget. That was a purchasing clerk that has not been hired, so we have vacancy savings from that. And then we will be putting into the new budget. It is something that is important to facilities management. Mark has been real patient, waiting for this position because we didn't quite have the funds that we needed. And we're still kind of looking for it, but it's very important to him. So it is there, and it'll be there for the future.
Based on that, Mr. Chairman, move for approval?
Second.
Third.
Third. Any further discussion? Renee, anything that you'd like to add?
I just want to say that we definitely support what we can do to get you the tools to get the work done. So, I mean, if it's one more person and not a piece of equipment, well, then that's what you're, you request us, and we, you know, support that.
I appreciate that, Commissioners, thank you.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Well, good luck with your new assistant.
Thank you, Chairman, and Commissioners. You know, this position that we've created here is just gonna benefit the county, and I really want to show you how it's gonna do it. So give me a little bit of time, but we're gonna make it work. And I'm very, very thankful for you guys for this. This is a step in, this department's ever had an administrative assistant. And I think we could do wonders with him or her. Thank you.
I think we're all confident that that will be the case, so. Thank you. Onto item B, this is a discussion regarding the approval of a purchase increase for food expense for the Taos Senior Program through CES. And we have Amanda Rayel. And, oh, well, we have Leandro and Amanda here, so.
Chairman, Commissioners, you've already approved a purchase order for food for the senior program, or it was approved earlier in the fiscal year. What we're asking for now, and you've already done the bars, you've seen the adjustments in the budgets, we're just wanting to extend that PO. It just happens to be over the $20,000 mark. So we wanted to come back to the Commission and let you know that this is the request that we like to do. We found the money within the budget, and it's there. Ms. Rayel's here for any questions that you may have specific to the program, but we do recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman? I, maybe if Ms. Rayel can say a few words about how the program is doing. I know we don't see Mike all that much anymore. Much appreciate your presence here today.
Second.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. The program is doing very well. Right now, we're trying to just put all our focus on food expense and utilities. So that's what we're hoping to accomplish with this increase, is to get us to the fiscal year end with this increase. It's gonna be a tight push, but we're hoping that this might cover us for the food expense.
Thank you for your work on it. We always hear good things about it, and it's important work.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just so you know, Amanda's working on the new budget going forward. Her and Mike went and attended a training with AAA last week, I believe. We've made the corrections. We have a better estimate of what benefits really are gonna be for our employees. And I think they've given us a little bit more money. It's probably not quite enough, but we're happy to take whatever they give us and stretch it as far as they can. But they've been doing a good job over there. And Amanda does a great job as well, so I want to thank her.
Good news. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second.
I've made a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we do have a motion and we do have a second. Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
It was in that water.
I got that one right. I had that one right.
Right.
Okay. 11C, this is a discussion regarding the approval of, to purchase a transport vehicle for the adult detention center. John Gonzalez, Detention Director.
Good afternoon, Commission Chair, members of the Commission. We are asking for approval to purchase a transport vehicle for the adult and juvenile detention centers. We do transports from the detention center to appointments and also to Holy Cross Hospital when an ambulance is not required. And we have a vehicle now, but it is not working properly. And we have a lot of problems with it. We did find some money in the budget with the assistance of the Finance Director to be able to purchase a new vehicle to be able to transport detainees to and from appointments and the hospital when needed.
Mr. Chairman, is this vehicle equipped with extraordinary things that would otherwise another vehicle would not be? To make sure that the prisoner is safe and the people who are driving the vehicle?
Yes, it is an official police vehicle. It's a four-wheel drive, and it includes all specs that we had asked for. It's got the cage in the back portion of the vehicle and the front portion of the vehicle so that the detainee and the officers are both secured. And also with the vinyl seats and the rubber flooring for easy cleanup should something, you know, dirt or something happen in the vehicle.
And there was a grant made available for this, or through the budget process?
Yeah, it was through the budget process. I don't know how you would explain that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we had talked about this early on. This was also last year in the budget, and the purchase wasn't quite made. And so we didn't budget for it in this new year. But we talked with Ms. Gonzalez about if they were able to save the amount of money in their operating budget, we would go ahead and move that. And so the last meeting, we did do a bar within the 399 to move the money. We're not asking the detention center to purchase the vehicle out of their budget since we basically supplement that from the general fund anyway. We're just gonna purchase the vehicle for them out of the general fund. But they did save the money. They spent the year diligently working on their budget, looking at their operations. They have found the $30,000 or so that they needed to save, and they have been able to do that, so.
What is the total amount?
The total amount of the vehicle is $28,582.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Jude, we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, is this, Commissioners, is this the van? Is this a van?
This is not a van. It is a... Okay.
The Ford Expedition 4x4.
Yes, it is an Expedition. Yes, it is an Expedition.
Mr. Chairman, our, Mr. Archuleta, there was some mention of a van. Is that going to be an additional vehicle for the sheriff? No?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Onto item D and this is Back to the Street Cleanup.
Mr. Chairman, Commission, before we move forward on that, before Antonia leaves, I just wanted to thank her and Jonna for the work on actually saving that money in order to purchase this. Well, we hold them accountable for that and I appreciate the hard work on it.
You can start this.
Thank you. Tell us about what you've learned on the street cleanup requirements.
What I learned about the street cleanup requirements is under the New Mexico statute, section thirty-three dash three dash nineteen, prisoners who are sentenced to imprisonment in the jails to work on public projects without pay or remuneration whatsoever. There is a Taos County policy and procedure for detainee workers and detainee workers can be utilized inside as well as outside of the facility. Under the Taos County policy, section E, sentenced detainees who are allowed good time are eligible for consideration as detainee workers. Selection of detainee workers will be done at the discretion of the supervisor in charge of the detainee worker program. For road crew, under section five E, road crew workers must be sentenced to mandatory or good time and these are only workers allowed to leave the facility. These workers must pass medical classification and behavioral qualifications and are selected at the discretion of the road crew officers. Road crew or any other workers leaving the facility will be visually strip searched when leaving and returning to the facility. Under the New Mexico statute nineteen seventy-eight thirty-three dash two dash forty-four, trustees selected for outside detail cannot be convicted of crimes involving children, crimes involving organized crimes, rapes, capital punishment crimes, or previous escape charges. And I had attached, as per the recommendation of the Commission, a policy from Santa Fe County and also Rio Arriba County. Santa Fe County's is in a lot more detail than Rio Arriba's. And also, I did speak with Taylor Horst from the New Mexico Association of Counties, the risk manager, and his response was, as far as the liability involved with detainee work crews, it certainly exposes the county and the pool to additional liability. I also spoke with Manny Romero, who is a detention expert, and he agrees with the comments and the county should be willing to fund the full-time employees and all the additional resources that goes along with such program. I think, he also states that, I think they want to implement such a program with existing staff. However, I know that Commissioner O'Donnell in the last Commission meeting was wanting to explore the Sheriff's Department possibly overseeing the detainees out on the work crew. And I also received information from Facility Manager, Mr. Mark Flores, stating that he would be willing to assist should this actually occur in the future. And that's what I have to report from what was asked of me from the last Commission meeting.
Jonna, it looks to me from reading this that the detainees have to be sentenced.
Yes.
And that was the limiting factor in terms of our population?
Correct.
And the last time you reported that we had three detainees who had been sentenced in the past six months?
Correct.
Wouldn't be much of a work crew.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have your permission to work with Jonna over this. It's not only work crew, but also a policy for good time in exchange for work in the jail. So, I would like to be able to expand this and if I could get the full copy of the policies and procedures in the jail. This is because what you relayed also includes ability for prisoners to be in the kitchen, to do laundry, to clean in the jail. I'm assuming painting too. I mean, so there, this is not being used yet in the jail, so I would like to just explore this further, talk to the judges about how the procedure is, they have to be sentenced in the jail, and look at this at a future date, but continue to see what we can do to provide work for prisoners and also to utilize them, that there are statutes that we can use them and not have to pay them, but we can also in turn create programs where they do get remuneration and where they do get good time. They get a credit on their jail sentence. So, if I could have your permission, I'll just work directly with Jonna to get more of a understanding of the policies and how it works, see if we need to shore up the road crew, any language. Is this, was this policy and procedure for the jail, was this approved by a past Commission?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, yes, it had been. It is a policy that was already in place. We do have limited work crews inside our facility and we also have developed a good time policy that had been approved and signed off by the judges. The detainees who have been in the past approved for good time, we have been putting them to work inside the facility to earn their good time.
So, I'd just like to be able to learn a little bit more, work with Ms. Gonzalez and come back with you if there's anything. Do you recommend that this policy and procedure needs to be revisited or are you happy with it?
I think, Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, I do review and revise the policy and procedures annually and as needed and I have no problem with going back and looking at it again and revisiting it to see if there are any changes that should or could be made.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd just like to say, like to say hello to John Gonzalez, who has had experience in writing jail policies and working with language and so I'm hoping that he might be able to work with me and Jonna at some point and give us some recommendations since he's had experience. So, I'm happy with your report, Ms. Gonzalez. I'm not going to give up on a work crew outside. I think we can make it happen, but I would like to talk to the judges and we'll just keep an eye on who's in the jail and who's sentenced. And so if you'd be willing to work with me, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, did I get that right, that it's a state statute that, that has the detainee must be sentenced requirement? It's not just our policies?
It's a state, yeah, it's state law.
It's my understanding it's a state statute. I reviewed these briefly, but not in depth.
So, that would be a limiting factor even if we did amend our policies and procedures? But...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner. Maybe our, Mr. Archuleta, maybe will help us out. Do we have the funding to have those extra two people or person that's going to be out there watching over these cleanup crew out in the streets? Do we, are we, this year's budget, is that already set up or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Gallegos, part of what I've done is asked Jonna to try to leverage and that's why she's reached out to Mr. Flores and also the Sheriff's Department. Somehow we need to try, we don't have the funding in her staff right now. We're just trying to make sure we're hired up in her staff and fully positioned for that, but I have asked her to try to leverage other agencies to help us with that. She'll also be reaching out to the Taos Police Department, who at one point had expressed also an interest in it, but again, that would be within the city limits and not within the county limits. And so there's, there's some discretion that we're trying to follow there, but we're also trying to leverage some positions to see what we can do to help with that.
And, Mr. Chairman, there are other counties, municipalities that do this?
There are other counties that do do this, yes.
And so we can look at their policies as well?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Romero, I have been gathering and am continuing to gather any and all facilities who have a policy on this so we could get as much information as possible from everybody and if need be, with all the other ideas, create one of our own that fits Taos County specifically.
And through your experience as a member of that affiliate, has this ever been discussed, whether it creates more of a liability for the county or if it's something that is in fact is working well?
It is both. It does have its pros and its cons. It's, it depends on what the county specifically wants to do and what the liability would be on that county. There's a lot of things to consider, you know, classification, the population, how many available, do we have staff? So, there are a lot of things to look at and if it's a really well-developed program and the county wants to consider something like that, then we could weigh out the pros and cons to see what it would actually do for Taos County.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Gonzalez maybe to come forward and speak a little bit to that as well. I know that you've had the experience at Bernalillo County, I believe, and maybe talk about it a little bit.
Hold on, come on up, Jon, welcome. Jonna, just before Jon addresses us, how many sentenced detainees do we have right now?
To date, I have one.
I hate to keep throwing cold water on it, but there's just not that many. We just, for some reason, we don't seem to have many sentenced detainees, but maybe Jon can...
Yes, we do have one today and he is earning good time through work inside of the facility.
Inside, so, you know, in order to put that one detainee out on the street and to have the additional staff, it just seems like a lot to me, but we'll, we'll keep moving forward. Thank you. Good afternoon, Jon. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Manager, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Commissioner Romero. Yes, I do have a good amount of experience in this field and yes, absolutely, definitely, you do need to have sentenced inmates only for the simple reason that all the others are pre-trial, so they're still quite innocent until found guilty. But it is a very valuable program. I did work with the Bernalillo County Detention Center with John Dantes, the director there for many, many years, and I worked in the mayor's office in Albuquerque for four years with Mayor Baca and CEO Lawrence Rayel, so I'm pretty familiar with the program at the county in Bernalillo. And then I worked with Cornell Companies, a jail and prison company, for ten years at the Valencia County Detention Center and at the Federal Detention Center in downtown Albuquerque, the old RC, whatever it was called, BCDC, which became the Regional Correctional Center, although that was federal and they had similar programs. These programs, especially out in the open, can be quite beneficial, but they do have their liabilities. The good news is you control, you, meaning the jail and the policies and the procedures and the Commission and the director, control exactly who goes out there, under what circumstances, and yes, they're all nonviolent, they're all folks that could contribute to the community. The other positives are that the community would view this as somehow the inmates who are living there for free and having been sentenced to doing something, to giving back to some kind of reparation, you might say. It also can be turned into a real positive rehab-type program, where in addition to just doing the work, they could have pre-work programs, pre-work to qualify for it. You would have to, you know, reach a certain level of trust. But anyway, it could be made into a real positive program and I know for a fact that Bernalillo County is very, has a very successful program in and out of the jail. The feds only had it in the jail and they were, some that were paid and some that weren't paid, but I think Commissioner O'Donnell's onto a very good thing and it's a coincidence because I am the Secretary of the Aseca Madre del Rio Grande del Rancho and we're about to do a diversion project on our main dam up, on the way up to Pot Creek. And there's a sign there that says, littering, $300, Taos County. Meanwhile, there are hundreds of plastic bottles and trash and blah, 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 and the treasurer of our, of our association said just yesterday, golly, I wish they would do something about cleaning this up and they should have some kind of a program. And I just saw it on the agenda online and I happened to just coincidentally walk in here to look at a picture of the, of the ladies that worked on the Rosie the Riveter and my sister told me all about it. And in doing so, I saw one lonely Commissioner sitting in here, dear Ledge, studying her notes and I said, Candace, we know each other from the nineties as well as some of you others. But anyway, I think it would be a wonderful program to explore further and perhaps maybe implement. And in talking to the judges, you might even find out that a lot of the judges don't sentence for very much or very long because what's the point of having them in jail just being fed and maintained, whereas maybe they could be rehabbed and give back to the community in that process. So, talking to the judges would be a very valuable aspect of it. So, as a, as a volunteer, as a concerned citizen that'd like to see the trash picked up, beer bottles and empty cases and plastic, I think it'd be worthwhile to explore and I'd be happy to work as a volunteer with, with the director and with the Commissioner. I'll stand for any questions if you like.
Got to get that one guy up there. Get him, so the judges, the judges have an option of sentencing other detainees? I mean, I'm assuming in Bernalillo, there were a lot more detainees who were sentenced?
They have eleven acres under one roof of nothing but prisoners, twenty-five hundred.
So, that's our limitation again, you know, it keeps coming, I just keep coming back to that because we have so few detainees that are sentenced, it would be...
Well, that might be a good question out of the whole thing is to ask the judges, how come you're not sentencing people?
Right.
That might be a good question, but anyway.
Thank you, Jon.
Sure, thank you.
Onto number twelve, Budget Matters, item A. This is a discussion regarding a budget adjustment to the general fund. Mr. Cordova.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, because the general fund comprises many departments, this budget adjustment stretches over multiple departments. The first part of it at the top, we are wanting to increase overtime for Facilities Management Department by $2,500. The extreme storms of a couple weeks ago pretty much exhausted his overtime budget and some of the guys are patiently waiting to actually get paid from that time because there was no money left in his budget. And we're also putting in an additional amount just in case something else comes up that he needs to give his guys some overtime. So, that's for Facilities Management. And my NMIA boiler insurance, we over expended by $21. That's an insurance that's required. We just under budgeted, we want to fix that. This is an opportunity. This part is coming out of maintenance contracts within the facility's budget, so he found some money in there and he's using that. The next part of this is mostly for the HR Department. We are hoping to increase professional services by $6,500, other contractual services by $5,000, printing and publishing by $2,000, employee training and mileage by $350 each. The money for this is coming from multiple departments. This is one of those very collaborative efforts. We're taking overtime from the assessors' budget, who did, we did talk to them about it. We're also taking overtime from legal, the attorney's budget, overtime from purchasing and finance department's budget. And then we had some savings in the NMAC land use coverage and we had some savings in postage and mail service and that's how we intend to make up the difference for HR. And then the final part of this bar is to increase mileage reimbursement in both the Commissioner and the manager's budgets and as well as fixing an overpayment on the surety bond insurance. And that money will come from some savings in NMAC property liability insurance. So, that's a lot to take in. I stand for any questions, if you have any questions on any of that.
We need separate motions for those?
No, because it's all within the general fund, we can do it all with one bar here and we did put a lot in there, but it's, we were kind of cleaning up at the same time and trying to take care of multiple departments at once.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Commissioner Fambro?
Just going to make the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Onto item B. Onto item B, discussion, decision regarding bar adjustment for the clerk's office.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is actually for the lodgers tax promotional fund in this year's budget. On that fund, the clerks allowed the management to have some money in publishing and printing to do some advertising that was kind of along the lines of the purpose of the lodgers tax. We kind of spent it all and now they needed some money to be able to advertise their meetings for the lodgers tax. So we're asking to move 2,000 into printing and publishing and taking it out of their supply line item.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Thank you, Leandro. Onto 13, we have county managers' report and this is a discussion on a cash match for Camino del Medio.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just for clarification, actually Brent's the one that was asking for that money from the clerk's office, so just want to be very clear about that. In case Anna has any problems with that, she can talk to Brent about it. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you all know, the town of Taos has issued an RFP for the Camino del Medio project, which is a joint venture between Taos County and the town of Taos. The bid came in at $374,225.45. We have available in that line item, $310,000, and that's the match between the town and the county. And so there's a shortfall of about $60,000. We are in negotiations right now with the engineering company to try to lower that amount down, but at last week's council meeting, the town passed a bar for $30,000 in order to pay for that line item or their half of that line item. And so I stand in front of the commission today to ask for us to be able to push over $30,000 in order for us to make good for the engineering of Camino del Medio. The finance director has already identified that money as to where that would come from. I believe it comes out of Commissioner Fambro's road fund, which had been dedicated by the previous commissioner before he came in.
Need to help?
Mr. Chairman, so move, you know, we're committed to this already and we need to move through with it, get it done. Move for approval?
Second.
Discussion, if none, call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we've already taken care of 14, so now we're on to 15, personnel matters, item A. And this is a discussion decision regarding the AFSCAM Council 18, Taos County Public Employees Local Union 1193. And this is a discussion regarding the bargaining strategy preliminary to collective bargaining negotiations, and it's something that we can go into executive session for. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Malone asking that this be discussed?
This is not my item, but I do, I do believe that it is appropriate to discuss it in executive session. And if the commission is inclined to go into executive session on this one, we might as well go ahead on. The only remaining items are all items for executive session. There are two after this that are litigation.
Move that we go into executive session, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
To listen to items and personnel matters as well as legal matters.
Second with chairman reading the legal matters for the public.
Sorry?
Reading the...
Right. Oh, okay. And Mr. Chairman, if you could read the exemption as well. So the motion is for us to go into executive session to discuss the bargaining contract with the union and the exemption on that one is 10151H5. And the legal matter is to discuss the litigation with the architect and the exemption on that is 1015-1H7. And finally, to discuss the litigation involving Veronica Romero, and that exemption is also We have a motion and we have a second. Call for the vote?
Yes, second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Do we have a motion to come back into session?
So moved.
Second? Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. And ask our county attorney to give us a report on the executive session.
The county commission met in executive session on three matters. The local union negotiations under exemption, 10151H5, 10151H5, and two legal matters, the ACOM litigation under 10151H7 and the Veronica Romero litigation under 10151H7. Only those three matters were discussed. No formal action was taken.
We have a motion to confirm the attorney's report.
So moved.
Second. Move, yes.
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 Yes. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, thank you, and good night.